Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board for Monday, June 13, 2022. We'll start off with a roll call. Try to bear with me a little bit tonight. I left my reading glasses on my desk, so I'm not in a good place. I either can see you or I can see this, but I can't do both. Okay. So, roll call, Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
The Chair, Mike King, is here. Jane Gleason.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Here.
And Sherri Cork. I keep wanting to call you. I want to call you Sherri Corbett. There's an issue there. I don't know what it is.
I have an issue with that, too.
There, I might as well.
Yeah. So we have a full board in attendance. I haven't even met her yet. Oh, well, glad. Did you meet her twice for me?
No, no, I think you shouldn't.
Hey, Ken? Would you be so kind as to introduce your new assistant?
Yes, thank you. This is Monique Baldwin. She's the new Assistant Town Planner. It's going to fill in and do everything correctly that I haven't been doing right.
Oh, good. It's good. Yep, it's good to meet you, Nick. Okay.
Can you take a lottery, see how long she lasts?
That was rough, Mike. Okay. First on the list under Preliminary Business is 13-22 and A&R for Robert Kristofolsky Jr., 738 County Road. Is there someone here to speak to this? Not here. Can't be, can't really be that important to him. I wonder if he got hung up. Say that, say that again, I can't hear you.
Remind people at home to raise their hand if they are.
So for the folks that are joining us through Zoom, if you want to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized. I know the parking lot, the parking lot because of the game is a little challenging, so I think maybe I'll give them a few minutes and move them down the agenda a little bit. So Preliminary Business, item number 14-22 A&R, Sarajon Realty LLC, 152 Blackmore Pond Road.
Good evening.
Evening. Hey, Charlie, how are you? This one here, Ken, there's no, there's a... This is the one that... Oh, no. There was, there's no application that's associated with this on the website.
The application is attached to the handout. The application is attached to the handout.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brad Bertola with JC Engineering. This property is located on Blackmore Pond Road and consists of creating a parcel from an existing conforming buildable lot. Remaining land area meets all requirements in the R60 zoning district, has at least 180 feet of frontage, has at least 60,000 square feet of lot area, and meets the lot shape factor. We are creating a parcel, approximately 28,000 square feet, for future conveyance to a budding lot. So we feel this meets the requirements under approval not required.
I looked at this one online. I didn't see anything that raised a flag, but of course I'm going to, I'm going to ask Charlie to weigh in. Did you get a copy?
No.
Let me get that one, so I look at this online.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant. We're looking at Lot Parcel A, is that what we're looking at?
Parcel A is part of the entire bolded Lot 1, so...
Okay, so Parcel A is now part of Lot 1?
Parcel 1, Parcel A is being subdivided from, I guess, Lot 1.
Okay, so that's being taken away, not added to.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The, on the front page of the application, it says 180 feet is required for frontage. And this looks like it's giving you with, if you're looking to potentially combine Lot 1005 and Parcel A, it gives you 150.
Lot 1005, 1,005 is a pre-existing developed lot.
Right.
It is non-conforming today. It will have obviously more front, more area, more frontage. It'd still be non-conforming, but it's a grandfathered lot, a pre-existing developed lot. We're just adding, we're going to convey it to give more land area. We don't have to give 80 feet of frontage.
Charlie, start.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't see anything in there that would prevent it being signed as an approval not required. In answer to, just a comment to Jane's question, if it's a pre-existing lot and they're just adding to it, they're making it more conforming. That doesn't mean that it's going to be usable for a separate building lot necessarily if there's nothing on it right now. It might be subject to a special permit from the Board of Appeals. But what they're doing with this plan is simply dividing off a parcel to be conveyed, for whatever reason, leaving a parcel that is buildable because of the frontage. So I think it's okay the way it is. That Parcel A is just being added to the next draw lot, making it a little more conforming, which is perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
As long as it has the note.
Was for that, whether at the point of adding land like that to an existing non-conforming lot, that you need to bring it up to conformance?
No, it doesn't do anything to affect that other lot. It's a lot that's already there. So they've got a note on the plan that says it's not to be considered a separate lot in its current configuration, so I think it's, I think it's okay to sign it that way.
Just to clarify on that, it could be two non-conforming lots and having an exchange of property between them as well, too. Case law supports A&R in that, in that instance. Or it's just for a transfer of land between them.
So presumably this is going to be combined with Lot 1005 ultimately?
Yes.
So it gives the property owner on 1005 the opportunity, if, for instance, they have a house there and they want to add on to it, the setbacks will, they'll, will allow them more room this way.
It would still require a special permit, probably, because it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I would entertain a motion to take a vote to approve. Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Carl Schultz?
Aye.
Sherri Cork?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
I don't appear to have the proper pen here to sign the A&R, so you'd have to sign that later.
I have a Sharpie if you want.
You have a Sharpie, even better.
Is it a sharp Sharpie?
It's a double ender.
That's a nice one. Ken, Ken will be jealous when he sees that. Oh, yeah. Joe, Ken, you go first.
I've got the pen in my hand, so I'll just sign.
Exactly. Keep going. You'll probably get the top one if you want. And one more right here. All right, Mike, you've got a, did you get the paper?
No, I haven't, I haven't done the paper one yet. Item number three is, item number three, Schedule Workshop on Regulations to Amend. This one here goes to what Jane's been working on.
Well, actually, we have several things. Ken's been working, well, we worked last year, Richard Swenson and I, and Charlie helped on every one of these. Article 15, we have updates to Article 15. I'm looking for Ken to nod. Are, you've been working on Article 14, right?
Yeah, we have Article 14 and 15.
Okay. We also have the subdivision Rules and Regs, which we need to have a public hearing on. We need to review, and then we need to have a public hearing on.
Right, and you have the Lip Bylaw that needs to be changed, needs to be amended.
Have you, have you written that?
I have written an amendment to the Lip Bylaw.
Okay, so we have the Lip Bylaw, and then we have Jane's Article 16, Article 6, I'm sorry.
And we have the Dark Stores Bylaw that we want to discuss as well.
Are we going to get all that into one meeting?
Well, we probably need to have several.
And I'm under the assumption that we wanted to get the subject of onsite consumption for marijuana.
That, too, yeah.
On the discussion list.
Holy cow.
I think what we do is we set priorities about which ones you want to take forward at this time. And, and cut it down to a reasonable number and proceed with the amendments and the public hearings.
I'm open to suggestions from the board as far as what's the most important to you. I mean, me personally, I, I think the onsite consumption should be at the top of the list.
Well, actually, I think Article 15 is quite important.
I, I, I question why you say that onsite consumption is critical importance because it's not allowed under our, our bylaw at this time.
It's not allowing at all. I was under the assumption that it was and that our concern was its location.
No, it's not allowed because it has to be listed specifically, and it's not listed specifically as an allowed use.
It's not in the use table, is what you're saying, right?
That's right.
All right.
And it's specifically listed as a, as a separate use in the marijuana regulations.
Okay. I, I was, I was informed that there was going to be 10, 10 onsite permits issued by the state and that we should be concerning ourselves with where, if someone should approach us, where it might be allowed to be put.
It's not allowed anywhere.
I think if you want it, we should be creating a bylaw that, how we would allow it. If you don't want it, we have it, we're pretty well covered right now.
Okay. All right. I'll take your word for it, and I'll come back and see you when we end up with one.
Well, I'll take you out to the vice then, too.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Get right on that. All right, so Article 15, I heard, is...
That being said, 15 would be my priority.
I think that's probably going to be a pretty lengthy discussion, so we should probably schedule that for all by its onesie.
We've got a lot of that done already. It's, it's, it's done. I don't think it's been presented to the board. Because we, when last time I saw it, it was 75%, 80% done.
Yep.
I think Ken finished it. I think 14 and 15 are done and ready for review and comment.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The Lip Bylaw is also done, ready for review and comment.
That's right.
Subdivision Rules and Regs is done and ready for comment.
I think it needs a little bit more. It needs the, the graphics in it as well, too.
Okay. Do we need to have a subcommittee meeting with you to get your feedback before we come to the...
No, we can do it with the board.
Okay. And then I don't know about dark stores. I don't, I don't, that's a new thing. I don't remember hearing about it.
Just basically a fulfillment center out of a storefront that really isn't there to serve the public.
Okay, I don't remember discussing it before, so.
It was, it was brought up very casually in a meeting or two ago about that they're becoming more prevalent in communities. So if you have an empty store, like JC Penney was empty, it would suddenly be a, basically a fulfillment center, but based out of a retail...
So we need, if that's going to happen, I guess we need...
So...
We need stormwater regulations as well, too. An update on those for the MS4 EPA program.
And if we're listing work that's coming down, do you know where the Selectmen did with their Energy Systems Committee?
As far as I know, that's, that's not, not going anywhere at this point.
Okay. So the good news is utility-grade battery storage systems are not allowed because they're not in the use table. So if they come down, they'll have to be dealt with that way, right?
The same way, yeah, as onsite consumption.
Okay. So for the first workshop, then, we look at Article 15 and 14 and...
Aren't those done? Yeah, that, we have to review them and then...
Yeah.
And then we could look at subdivision. Subdivision Rules and Regs are pretty important because that affects our operations.
Okay, so why don't we pick those three items for the first workshop?
Those are, yeah.
Okay.
The three, the three items are subdivision rules and regulations, Article 15 and Article 14.
And Article 14. So the 20th is out. So do we need, is there a room available on it, on a off night besides a Monday? Or do we have to stick to Mondays?
You may not get this room, but...
27 is usually available, right?
I know, it's used a lot as well, too. It's a, it's a hit or miss. Good chance we'll find a room, though, in some case.
And we'll need to be able to broadcast it, though. The workshop has to be open meeting, even though we don't have to take comment.
So now this gentleman's involved?
Uh, no, we can do, we can do just Zoom without John.
Okay.
Right.
So do we take a chance and put it off till Monday, the 4th? Or do we look for an off day?
Monday, July 4th?
The 4th of July?
Yeah. I'll, I'll be there.
I'm not here.
I'll be there. So, I mean, if we're sticking to Mondays, we're looking at July 18th?
Yeah, still gives us enough time for Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah, we have to get those, the first two have to be done. Which ones have to be done for town meeting?
Article 15 and 14.
The Lip Bylaw also?
Lip Bylaw, too, yeah.
And if we update Article 6, Jane has some proposals. So those are the ones that have to make town meeting.
So why don't, let's, can we schedule those for the 18th, then? July 18th?
It'd be fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am?
A question. We had talked about the possibility of bringing the hydrogeology study... It is. Okay. I'll speak more clearly. We talked about bringing the hydrogeology report preparer in for discussion with the planning board, and I think the date of the 20th had been thrown around. Do we have another date for that, or what's the status there?
I, I was under the impression the 27th was the date that you said he was going to be available.
That's what we, that's what was been planned, yeah.
So, I mean, that works for us, but we have to keep that night's agenda very light.
And I make it for the...
Because that, that discussion's going to be detailed and lengthy, and I, I don't want to, I don't want us to be in a position where we're rushing through other people's projects to accommodate that report.
Right. I heard you got a video even as well, too.
And there's a video involved, too, right? So, I mean, I've read the report three times. I haven't got a clue what it says.
I have a clue, but not much.
Yeah, it's way, it's way over my head, so...
Words I've never heard of.
It's going to take some time to go through it. So if we do have him come in on the 27th, it, it has to be kept in mind in the planning office that that night has to be a very, very light agenda so that we can take the time to go through this. I mean, that report's been months in the making.
Yeah. I, I think the 27th would have to, as, as the time for it, then.
Yeah.
Ken, was the 20th not set in stone? Because that's what your email said.
Yeah, the 20th turned out to be a holiday, though, Juneteenth holiday.
Oh, okay. So...
All right, so the 27th will...
The 27th is.
27th for the hydrologist, and then the 18th for the articles.
Yep.
That's July.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm wondering if, if we want to, do you want me to research to see if there's any room availability? I can call Patty.
Yeah. Yeah, because if we tentatively pick the 18th, we don't have to, we don't have to post that until...
Right.
Right? From Thursday, the 23rd.
Through, through you, to the board. If I, if I contact the town administrator and see if we could find a meeting room that has Zoom capability, find a night, are there, are there nights of the week that either work? Wednesdays are probably not good, but, I don't know, Thursday nights, Friday nights. I don't know about Tuesday nights. Tuesday night's the Board of Selectmen.
They're on the other week now on the Board of Selectmen, so we got time in between on Tuesdays.
All right, I can research it, but if there's a night of the week that doesn't work for you, or...
For, for me, any night works.
Not for me. Friday doesn't work for me.
Fridays, I'll stay away from Fridays. Mike?
I'm flexible.
Okay, Sam?
Flexible.
Okay, I'll, I'll get back to everybody. I'll call Patty tomorrow and just ask her what's available before the 18th, if we want to slot a workshop meeting.
Want to get in there.
Or the hydrogeologist. And I'll, if we do the hydrogeologist, I'll make sure Mr. Shanahan is available. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll work with you, too, or... Yeah, I mean, I won't leave you out of it, I'm just saying.
I'll keep in touch, I'll...
Yeah, I'm just going to do the legwork, so you don't have to.
Right, sounds good.
Okay. Back to preliminary business, number one, Robert Kristofolsky. He's, there's still no one here to speak to this. So do we just continue this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I guess so. Let me see when it was submitted.
Well, I mean, he's kind of, I mean, he's kind of created his own problem.
Yeah, it's a problem for us as well, too, since he was sanctioned by town clerk on the 31st of May.
Yeah, but we can't act on something that nobody's here to speak to.
He's not here, we can, we can deny it.
Deny it due to a lack of information?
Or we can approve it, either way.
Pretty straightforward, Mike. It's pretty straightforward.
As far as the A&R?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little irritated that no one showed up, though. I mean, we're donating our time to review it. At least they can do a show up to address it.
I don't think straightforward at all, though, because the frontage for the, one of the lots is, half of it's in another town. And that requires the other town at least to have approval of the, of the creation of the lot. It's not a legal lot in the town of Wareham.
Yeah, he's right. Part of it's in Rochester.
Ken, I don't think that's quite true. The bound, the boundary line is the street line, but it's not in the town of Rochester. That, I saw that plan, that, that whole plan is in the town of Wareham. But the, the street line crosses at a right angle, but it's still all within the town of Wareham. I don't see where the town of Rochester gets involved in anything there.
They, they have the frontage on the, on the parcel. We only have, how much?
Can, can we bring it up on the... Oh, we have it here, I'm sorry.
So the, the, the town line actually crosses the street?
It does. It's, it jogs across County Road in several places.
Yep.
But the whole, the whole lot is in the town of Wareham.
It's in Wareham, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
But the frontage is...
For Lot 1,037. B, it appears to me that 65 feet of the frontage is in the town of Wareham and 154.82 feet is in the town of Rochester.
With the lot lines on the opposite side of the town line, why, how could that be in Rochester? I see what Charlie's saying.
It meets, it meets town of Wareham's zoning, and it's in Wareham.
Yeah.
The frontage isn't in Wareham, though. I, I think this is a, a, a legal question as to whether or not it's a legitimate frontage if it was in a way that... I, I'll go along with Charlie's recommendation on this one if you want, but I think it's an issue. It has to be resolved.
I don't know. I mean, I, I have to agree with Charlie. The way I read it is the entire lot is in the town of Wareham.
So just through you to Mr. Buckland, you're, you're saying the 65.26 feet, that's the section in question?
That's the only frontage in the, within the town of Wareham, yeah.
And the, the rest of the frontage, the 154.82, you're saying that frontage is in Rochester?
That's correct.
That's how you're reading this?
That's how I read that plan, yes. Which means that it doesn't have, doesn't meet the zoning in, in the town of Wareham.
That, that I understand. So the, the real question, Mr. Chairman, before us is how do we, how do we determine is the frontage in Wareham? Mr. Buckland, how would, can I ask that to Mr. Buckland?
Of course.
How, how would that be determined, quote unquote, officially? What, what's the process for understanding that?
Let's know if there was case law that had defined the situation.
So if this, if this map or this drawing is accurate, the actual entrance to the driveway, and it looks like it's a circular driveway, is in Rochester.
That's right.
That, that part of it, I understand.
That's this, that's this, that's this stuff down here.
So those are in Rochester.
Where's the actual road? Where's the actual road? I mean, it's hard, I don't see where...
Doesn't have an edge of pavement drawn.
Yeah.
So based on what Charlie's told us in the past, that the, the town line would be down the center line of the road?
No, the town line is where it's shown on the plan. It, it's either one sideline or the other. And a long county road, all the way from Cranberry Highway to the Marion Line, it crosses over and goes back and forth from various places. But I think you could apply that portion of the subdivision law that says it's a way in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control, has adequate frontage on the way. I don't think we, in any division of property that we've ever had in Wareham, we've ever questioned this type of a situation.
Amazing event to this situation before.
Things bound back and forth all along that road, you know, all sorts of places. But the lot still is in, in Wareham. I wonder how the town of Rochester would apply their zoning to it? What would, what would be their determination for signing the plan or endorsing the plan?
Uh, there's a case law where access from another town could be restricted because it was industrial going through residential district. The, the, the other town can control the access that is provided to the, the parcel land in the other town.
But the, the zoning is clearly defined on both sides of the street. It's either residential in Rochester, or it's residential in Wareham.
Well, it's, it's the Rochester regulations that apply, the bylaw from Rochester that applies to the section in Rochester, not Wareham bylaw.
Yeah, but it's not in Rochester. The lot is not in Rochester. It's in the town of Wareham.
Yeah, but the access and the, and the frontage is in Rochester as well as Wareham.
Well, I, I think because the applicant has declined to grace us with their presence tonight, can we defer this to, to council for clarification?
You've only got 21 days to sign it from the date of submission. If it's already been submitted, you've got to sign it or, or say it doesn't comply, that it's a subdivision, either way.
When was it?
It was submitted on the 31st of May.
31st?
You're already at the limit of time to endorse it, but then, maybe make the next meeting.
Now we can't make the next meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny A and R, 1322, Robert Kristofoli, 738 County Road, based on two reasons. One, the applicant's not here to answer questions that we can't...
Get clarification.
Get clarification on, and it's unclear on the legal standing, based on input from our two expert advisors. I'm unclear on the legal standing, um...
Yeah, we have...
Of frontage. I, I'm unclear. That's, that's, that's my reason for the motion.
No, I think we have, we have opposing opinions by probably two of the most educated people in this arena.
In this room, anyway.
Definitely in this room.
So that's my motion.
So that's your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Carl Schultz to deny, based on no applicant to answer questions and an unclear legal access. And second in by Jane Gleason to a vote. Sam Corbett?
I'm going to abstain.
Carl?
I'm, I'm going to vote yes with a fir, with a further comment. If, if we misread the law, the applicant can certainly appeal the decision, so it's not...
Yeah.
You know, it's, we're not...
Cutting him off.
Yeah, it's not like we've taken away his opportunity to go forward.
Right, so he can, he can appeal, and we can get clarification and revisit it.
Okay.
I'd love to have clarification by a higher authority, yeah.
Okay. Sherri Cork?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Is the fact that we haven't acted already on this document, which was filed on May 31st, is that, is that deemed to be an approval by inaction?
That, well, if it's 21 days...
I think we're still, are we within 21 days, though, right?
We are within 21 days.
Okay.
The next meeting would not be within 21 days.
Yeah, then I, I vote aye.
Mike Deftis?
No.
No, as in clarification?
I...
No to approve?
No, I, I, I don't.
All right, the, the, the vote is...
To not approve.
And I vote not to approve.
No, I vote to approve.
You vote to approve, okay. So we have an abstain, we have a vote to not approve, we have Sherri vote not approve, Mike to approve, Jane?
Aye.
Aye to not approve.
To not approve.
Okay, and the chair votes aye to not approve.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a point of information, Sherri cannot vote on this.
On an air, A and R?
Right. She can vote on special permits, but as the associate member, she cannot vote on subdivision matters, so...
Okay, so we have a...
410. Oh, 4, 311.
311.
31...
Yep.
1. Yeah, because, yeah, because Sam abstained, and Sherri can't vote. Okay, so 311 not to approve.
Member board?
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what Ken said.
Associate? My associate. Subdivision's...
Okay. Continued public hearings. 33-21 site plan review, Wareham PV1 LLC, 0 Route 25, MAP 115, Lot 1,000, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Ebaugh from VHB, the Site Civil Engineer, here on behalf of the applicant. Before we get started, there are a few people on Zoom. I'm not sure if they've, they're rising their hand, but... Yes, there should be four. Betsy Mason, Haley Orbidall, Chris Wagner, and Mehdi Perry. Um, two other ones, Haley Orbidall.
Oh, I didn't. There's, there are two.
Yep, H A L Y, and then Mehdi Perry, M E D D I E.
Good question to ask, since it's not dated.
Send that down to those guys, we'll share this.
Okay. Yeah, I'm saying...
Uh, Mehdi Perry, M E D D I E.
September 7th.
Let me just confirm.
Hello, this is Mehdi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm here.
Brought the whole virtual team with me tonight to answer all your guys' questions. Um, I also have a few hard copies I will hand out to you guys now. Betsy, if, if you're on and you wanted to get...
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we start, this document you just handed me, is this an updated document, or do I have already a copy of this?
It looks like I already have a copy, so I don't know if I'm getting something new, or...
Oh, no, this is, yeah, the initial application, site planner.
Thank you, I don't need, thank you. I just want to make sure it's not different than what I have.
Actually, that graphic is a bit...
Okay. So your graphic, it doesn't have, does it have a date on it? Thank you. The last one was 5/23, right?
Right, thank you.
This one is now 6/13. Okay, thank you.
All right, Betsy Mason, if I may, to the chair and the board.
Uh, welcome, Betsy.
Uh, thank you. It, it's odd to be talking and not to see myself talking, but we'll proceed. Assume you can't see me either, and that's just fine. The, the figure that I, I'm assuming Sarah just handed out to you all is, as you'll see dated today, it is a new conceptual site plan that will be reflected in full site plans. And Sarah, please correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, we are revising our site plan to remove all proposed project components from any buffer zone to any wetlands jurisdictional area. So we are no longer, we, we never were in any wetland resource area, the project, that is. We had proposed some limited work in a small portion of the buffer zone for the site. We have now removed anything we, we had proposed in any buffer zone area. So at this point, you have a new, a plan before you, and Sarah can sort of walk through where the changes occurred. But the bigger picture here is that there's no longer any jurisdictional hook for the Conservation Commission to weigh in here. So we will be withdrawing our notice of intent that we had submitted to the Conservation Commission, because we don't need, you know, we don't need ConCom approval for anything. And that means for this board, that this board no longer needs to wait for an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission to move forward with a vote on the project, because there will, you know, we don't need an order of conditions anymore, and so we are moving forward in that, in that way.
Okay, thank you.
That's just as, uh, information to, to, you know, seems pretty important to, to call to your attention right off the bat here. That said, I know we have a few outstanding issues from the last hearing. I guess I'm primarily thinking of the issue of slope that Chris Wagner is prepared to address. In addition, this board had requested information about the nature of the easement from Charge Pond Road to and across our project parcel. In a letter last week, response to questions posed by the board, that letter included an explanation of what the easement consists of, and provided the 1966 documentation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Highway Department, you know, showing what, what, what the easement consists of. And, and finally, we did receive, you know, and thank Mr. Buckland for copying me on the email to the board with regard to further discussions about that easement issue, and then also a recommendation for a hydrogeological study. And Mehdi Perry from VHB, who is a groundwater expert, will, will address that proposed recommendation at some point during our overall presentation. I don't know, I, I leave it to you in what order you want to take those items. Oh, and then finally, I, I think we may have reached a conclusion on this issue, and by we, of course, I'm being presumptuous, I mean you, but I'm not sure. But just that vegetated buffers has been a point of discussion for several hearings now, and we just wanted to, um, close the loop on that issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's my shtick.
Okay, thank you. You could take them...
Mr. Chairman, one point back to Ms. Mason's summary, I think, I think there's one additional open item, at least from my notes. The decommissioning plan.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we provided a revised decommissioning plan. I'm sorry to trample over the end of your sentence. We provided a revised plan with that letter last week. So my, my apologies, yes.
I didn't, I didn't see the decommissioning plan.
I have.
We sent, we sent that on Thursday.
I have, um, hard copies with a response to comments letter.
How come they're not here?
I got that today, I think.
Yeah, we provided that on Thursday so that the board would have it before the weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
So the, the first comment in the letter that I just handed out is related to the decommissioning plan and bond. A hard copy of that is included in this set as well.
And this was dated June 9th?
Correct.
So this came out Friday?
Yes.
No.
The, the planning office is closed on Fridays.
No, absolutely. That's why I wanted to bring hard copies for you.
No, the 9th is Thursday. Actually, yeah, if I may, I know, I, I sent that before 5 o'clock on Thursday afternoon. By email to Mr. Buckland, I think the copy to Ms. Baldwin.
That again is, you know, the 11th hour, you know, if Mr. Buckland was overwhelmed with other projects or had other duties and it didn't get out to us, we're still faced with the same issue we've been struggling with right along, which is getting documentation five minutes before.
No, understood, so, you know, please feel free to review. The response to comment letter also has just a, a general summary, noting that we've addressed the comments from the board regarding this comment. Absolutely.
Okay, um, all right, so I'm going to put the decommissioning plan at the end of the list. If you want to, let's, let's address, in any particular order you want, the, the concerns that we've had.
Yeah, so since the, the graphic is right in front of you with the vegetated buffer, if we want to close the loop on that item, as Betsy mentioned, the last two hearings that we've had here is sort of discussing the options for vegetated buffers, but particularly along the Route 25 property line, as well as the property lines that abut the municipal lot to the south of our site and to the west. So as you can see on this figure, again, as Betsy noted, we have pulled all the work out of both the 200-foot riverfront area and 100-foot buffer zone associated with the wetlands. So again, on the southern half of the site, you can see that the purple line for the 200-foot riverfront area, trees have been pulled back from there. For the property lines abutting the municipal lot, we are maintaining a 25-foot vegetated buffer of existing trees, sort of along the municipal lot's southern property line, along the municipal lot's eastern property line. We are proposing a 30-foot vegetated buffer. It is a bit tough to see, but we have proposed a double row staggered trees along that area, where there is no existing vegetation right now, just to provide some additional screening in that area. And again, we've, we are providing the 25-foot vegetated buffer along the Route 25 highway line.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just, there's no compass rows on here, so I have, I'm not clear north, southeast, west.
I'm sorry, it's on the bottom right. So north is essentially just pointing to the right.
Next to the scale.
That little, okay, all right.
If it's easier, I can point to the graphic as well, but...
If that little white arrow in the black circle is north, I got it.
I know, for me, I thought we had pretty much wrapped up the buffer at the last meeting. I didn't realize there was anything left to discuss. I, I particularly don't have any issues with the proposed buffers. I think you've accommodated a lot of our concerns, especially about the line of sight coming down Route 25. So unless somebody else has concerns.
Well, I, I, my concern will remain open, that I don't believe we have the right to waive that requirement, but I'll defer to Mr. Buckland or Mr. Rowley.
If you want me to answer that one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, um, the, the regulation states that the buffer is 50 feet, and you can increase it if necessary, but it doesn't say anything about decreasing.
So that was my interpretation, and I didn't believe we had the right to decrease it, unless we have the right to grant a waiver, which we've been advised in the past that we can't.
Not to do.
Betsy Mason for the applicant, if I may?
One, one second, Betsy. Jane, you had something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still troubled by calling the vegetation on adjacent property the buffer. Can somebody refresh me? Did we?
Because it's not their, not their property.
Then intent, if I may, respond to your concern. The intent of this figure was not to sort of count the existing vegetated... The intent of this figure was not to sort of count the existing vegetated buffer towards our requirement. It is just noting what is surrounding in the area as well, calling out on the aerial what is adjacent to the, the property.
So is there buffer planned along the western border, north of the access road, and along the north border?
North of the access road is the portion of the site that's been previously cleared. I know, again, there is one open comment regarding the slopes of that existing area. On that side of the site, just based on the constraints of the existing slopes, again, we are not proposing any major earthwork here. It's not feasible to be able to plant new trees on that vegetated slope. We can address that additional comment regarding this area as well. There is existing vegetation that is stabilized on that slope that we're proposing to have remain. It's outside of our limit of work, within our limit of work. And you can see on the graphic where that light green hatch is on the north side of the property, is where we are planting the meadow mix on the flatter areas in order to establish some improved ground cover in that area. But again, just due to site constraints along that property line and the northern property line, without some major earthwork and major fill, trees wouldn't be able to become established.
So basically, our concerns about that, that cutaway in that sheer cliff, whatever you want to call it, for eight feet, you're, you're not intending to do anything, even though we brought it up as a concern?
We have addressed it as, as a concern of yours. Again, in the, the response to comments letter, actually, at the very last page, we've included a photo log, which shows photos from last March 2021, and then some photos from a recent site visit in May of 2022, which just shows over the past year, the, the slopes have remained intact and exactly as they have been with the, the same vegetation.
And Betsy Mason to the chair.
One moment, please.
I'm sorry, the, the photos are in the staple document that I just passed out. So there are four photos in total, and the, the first page, you can see the one from March 2021. So essentially, that, that photo is taken from the access road, sort of bisecting the site looking north towards that area. And you can see the slopes on either side have that, the shrubbery and vegetation established there. And you can see, again, the next three photos are from May 2022.
And how close is your scope of work to that?
So our fence is located along the toe of slope, a couple feet off the edge there. So again, where you see the flat areas, we are proposing the meadow mix because it is able to become established. And our fence would be located at the, the toe of the slope there, again, providing, yep, some, some screening of the panels as well.
So again, can you clarify, which photo am I supposed to be looking at?
Four photos.
Which photo number were you?
Well, three and four are from the same day, just different angles.
Two, two, three, and four are from the same day, from just different angles, showing the, this north side of the site. Photograph one is from over a year ago.
And, and I guess my question is, why, why is it that you're not proposing the required buffer along that, that stretch?
So again, because of the site constraints, from the property line to the toe of slope is where that two-to-one, one-and-a-half-to-one slope occurs.
But how many, how many feet does it encompass?
About 20 feet, I believe, from the property line.
Well, we don't know that for sure. So you, you're still coming up somewhat short on the buffer? I mean, you're relying on the tree stand, which doesn't belong to the property, to be your buffer?
Again, Betsy Mason to the chair. Just a, a, a point that I've made previously and would like to make again here, and that is that we're not asking you to waive the 50-foot requirement. Our, our position is that on the face of the bylaw, the requirement for a 50-foot vegetated buffer is only applicable where a lot abuts or is across the street from a residential district or residential development. This lot does not abut and is not across the street from residential district or residential development. Therefore, this 50-foot buffer does not apply.
All right. Thank you for your comment, Betsy. Questions from the board on the, on this slope and the no buffer?
Oh, it seems like we're setting a precedent, so if I want to put a solar farm in, a mine in, I'll sand out and leave it right to the bank and say, hey, let the other guy worry about the buffer. They totally circumvented everything that we wanted or we had concerns about on that slope. Now they're telling us it's not a problem. I don't think that's acceptable.
Yeah. I would have, I personally, I agree. Okay.
Again, if I, if I could just speak to that side, we, we do want to improve that area of the site. Again, with the meadow mix, once it's established, it has very similar runoff conditions to a, a forested area. Again, only trying to note the locations surrounding the site, trying to show that there are no residential areas immediately abutting our site, not trying to count that forested area. That's not on our property as, as part of the buffer, just trying to point out some of the site constraints and site locations around here.
Is that town-owned property? Can somebody?
I was just thinking the same thing. Do we know who owns that lot that you're up against?
Immediately to the west is town-owned property.
Town-owned property.
Correct.
Makes it okay, right?
No.
No.
No, I don't think so. Because, I mean, if, if something were to be done with that property down the road, now the, now the onus to create a buffer to, to, to shield the solar farm now becomes their problem and takes, and takes footage away from their property.
And I was just trying to figure out what the likelihood would be of that becoming residential, which, if it's town-owned?
Anything's possible.
Anything is possible. It could be. Exactly.
You know, see if they want to put elderly housing complaints.
If I may, Betsy Mason to the chair. The fact of the matter is, we are dealing with the current circumstances, not a future project that may or may not be proposed by the town or anybody else. What you have before you is a project that's proposed as of today. There are no projects proposed on the town property, certainly no residential projects proposed on the town property as of today. In fact, I and some others participated in the discussion with the town administrator, Mr. Buckland, and the director of Public Works, or whoever in charge of municipal finance, municipal maintenance facility, to discuss the possibility of a composting area going into the woods, in the middle of the woods in that area. So to the extent anything is being considered on that property, it's town, public works-related activities only, and in a limited portion there. We are certainly not saying that we are relying on the trees between Charge Pond Road and that northern, western boundary of our property as all vegetated buffer that we can use towards that requirement. Of course, as I said, we were saying that requirement doesn't apply. But what we have pointed out, and what, what I believe some members in the board actually agreed with last time, is that this, this property is set off from the road, set back visually from everything except a cranberry bog to the east, the municipal maintenance facility to the west, and Route 25 to the south. And I believe somebody, a board member stated earlier that, that, that those buffers along Route 25 to the south of municipal maintenance facility are, are okay, and that actually there are no, no further concerns here. Neither Route 25 nor the municipal maintenance facility is a residential district or development, so the 50-foot buffer does not apply to those. So again, we're not trying to avoid requirements here. We're just pointing out that they, they don't apply, and that we're trying to work with you to, to provide screening from locations that you've requested.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Regarding the potential use of the land, the, the area, the property under town ownership is Zoned R130. It's for residential use. And, and so that applies to the potential use of the site right now. The, the discussion we had with the, the applicants and the owner was to move the easement further north to create room for expansion of the municipal maintenance facility. But that fell through because they wouldn't allow it to be moved that far up, very far north. So we don't have a composting facility proposal for the north side of the, of the parcel right now. All we have is the zoning of R130 residential.
Again, Betsy Mason, if I may to the chair, two points. First of all, Long Road Energy and Wareham PB1 LLC did not reject proposal to move the access road. I believe it was the Shorecran, the representatives from Shorecran, didn't have any opinion either way. I believe they shut that proposal down. And again, the bylaw, the plain language of the bylaw talks about a residential district or development, not another residential parcel. And I, I understand, Mr. Buckland, where you're going with that, but the fact of the matter is, that's not what the plain language of the bylaw says. If, 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 if the intention were for it to be parcel, then it should say parcel, but it does not say parcel, at least not currently.
It says district, and as far as I'm concerned, that's when I talk about a zoning district. I'm talking about an area zoned according to the zoning that is laid down by the town. In this case, R130, a residential district.
I understand, and I guess I respectfully disagree.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I think Ken's right. I mean, reading in 594.1, number, well, I was looking at number two, where it says if it, if a lot abuts or is across the street from a residential district.
You're reading the new bylaw. We have to go back to 2019. That's the 2019.
The one in the book you just got is the 2019.
That's the new bylaw.
Yeah. So we're not allowed to use this?
No. So we want to look at 594.1 dot four.
Yes, we want to use 594 dot one dot four, page 46 of the 2019, I think 1009 zoning bylaws.
It still says residential district.
Yes, that's, and that's the point.
And that's the point Ken's making.
And Ms. Mason disagrees with the definition of residential.
Based on the plain language of the bylaw, which if I may, Appendix 1 of the bylaw, page 134, is entitled Boundaries of Districts. And it, it sets out the location and boundaries of the zoning districts, and it goes to each district, business development overlay, et cetera, et cetera. It does not refer to boundaries of parcels. It refers to boundaries of districts. So I respectfully suggest that we're talking about districts here, not parcels. And we do not abut a residential district. I will grant you, of course we have to, that we are within the 130, R130 district, but we are not abutting a district.
Ken, did you say that that, the parcel that we're talking about to the west of the project is Zoned R?
R130.
130. So it's a residential district.
That's correct.
Yeah, she's, she, Betsy is.
It's a parcel within a residential district.
Yeah, she's, she's arguing that.
But it's not a residential district.
She, she's talking about the whole residential district as a whole, not that parcel.
Which is the way the bylaw uses it.
Mr. Chairman, I think the planning board is entitled to some deference in the interpretation of its bylaws.
I, I agree. I agree. So, I mean, based on, based on the, the berm, and it would be my opinion that, I, I agree with Ken, Ken's interpretation, wholeheartedly, that this does abut a residential, a parcel within the residential district, and that the 50-foot buffer should, should be maintained.
If I may just do, again, as you mentioned earlier, this was brought up at multiple previous hearings, and we seem to come to a almost consensus on it. I know you mentioned a waiver. Is there, again, the site constraints of this site are, are, are difficult in terms of the, the proposed project and what they're, they're trying to build here, just due to the shape of the, the lot itself and the existing conditions? Is there any other consideration?
Not for me. I mean, one of the other board members are obviously welcome to weigh in. They all have an equal vote, but as far as I'm concerned, no.
Get rid of their whole leg? You know, if that's the problem, if they can't meet what's supposed to be done in there, you're out of here, that's all. You guys want your cake and eat it too. You create, you know, your client created the problem. Maybe the town will go into the sand business and mine out the rest of it, then it's no problem for nobody, right?
If I may, Long Road is the applicant and not the owner of the lot. Due to, again, the, the present conditions where we are, what we're dealing with right now in terms of what that side of the lot looks like, again, we're trying to improve it as much as we can with this, with this project.
It's not going to happen. I, I can't see it anyway. You know, like I said, I've got old eyes, but.
Do you want to go around and take comments?
Yeah.
Do we want to hear the slope presentation first?
Well, from what I understand, they don't have a slope presentation.
I believe that we, that Chris Wagner from VHB was going to address the slope issue. I might be mistaken.
So I, that was my brief overview of the slope on, on the Zoom call, as well as Christopher Wagner, who has been out on site as well, and is the environmental scientist for this project, if you'd like to hear additional information.
If there's no additional information, I'm fine. So I don't know if you're going to run and take comments. I, I don't, I understand, and notwithstanding the dispute over residential district, we, we have agreed right now to not interpret that language the same. This corner is not an issue of residential district boundaries, and they can just adjust the project size to meet the boundary requirement.
Right.
Just because the slope, and, and I'm not even discussing how the slope got there. I agree that that was a pre-existing condition, but you, you can adjust the project to deal with the pre-existing condition.
So in that area, in terms of the, the buffer, it's, it's improbable for us to be able to plant trees with that sloped area that's vegetated and.
Bring the line in and.
Stabilized.
Put the buffer on flat land.
If I could, well, so if I could just, would that, from the property line to the toe of slope, that's stabilized shrubbery vegetation and creating sort of a buffer elevation-wise to the, the site, would that count towards the 50 feet?
The buffer clearly, notwithstanding the district question, I'm going to, all my comments, assume that's out of sight, is that the idea of the buffer is to screen the site completely from view. So a slope planted with grass and shrubs will not serve to screen the site. Now, if you want to come back with sightlines and say that it would not be visible because of the elevation, I don't know. We could perhaps consider that. But the idea of the vegetative buffer is to completely screen the project from view.
And, and I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm just trying to find a, a middle ground, just because if there were 50 feet from the, the toe of slope out, it's, it's infeasible really to have the project built. We're trying to be as efficient as we can, especially on that side of the parcel.
And I understand that, and my opinion, again, notwithstanding the dispute, is we don't have the ability to waive that requirement.
But if you go to the site, how can you buffer when you're looking down on a project? If town property is.
Yeah, just still have that whole run.
We're talking about this corner where the slope is the problem.
But we're talking about mounting it on flat ground. All this area here is below a cliff. So if anybody walks over there, they're going to see it. If that's our intent.
Our intent is.
We can't do that.
Okay.
In my opinion, it's impossible. That's just my opinion.
But is, is it, is it impossible to create a screen because of the work that was done prior to?
Yes.
So they're trying to adapt a project to a site that has its own problem, its own issues created by.
Right.
The owner of the site.
Right.
So.
My point is that the property that they're up against is town property. If the town does anything with it. If the town does anything with it, we are still going to be able to look down on it. I understand what you're doing, but in some cases, I agree with Mike, but in some cases, it just doesn't work.
Mr. Chairman, to continue the discussion with Mr. Corbett, my understanding of one of the reasons that we put site design requirements is so that projects are sited on appropriate land, and if a particular property can't conform to the citing requirements, then the project is not appropriate for that particular parcel. That's my understanding of the use, land use guidelines and design requirements. So if we, the town, specify a set of design requirements that kind of direct where projects go onto a property, if a particular piece of property can't conform, then it's not an appropriate use for the planning board. Now, I don't know, that's the whole reason for variances, but that's a different board, and I don't know that we have the authority to change the use guidelines. That's my understanding.
This is Haley Orbital from Long Road, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
It just strikes me that this is a fairly big swing in the other direction from, I don't know, two, three meetings ago, that I recall, where we discussed kind of why we picked this parcel, given that it's surrounded by mostly, you know, commercial industrial style uses, but we are, you know, constrained with the dimensional shapes. This is probably the oddest shaped tax parcel I personally have ever seen. But, you know, so, and I recall at the time, a number on the board kind of agreeing that it is a more ideal, you know, location for solar versus some others that are more closely surrounded by existing residential developments. So I just distinctly remember that, and I understand and appreciate the dialogue that I just heard, but I just did want to, I guess, comment that it's a big swing from, I guess, the conversations we've been having with the past few meetings, and even the Chair saying that he thought this issue with the 25 feet had been put to bed as of last meeting. So just trying to figure out where this, you know, how we, how we get back to a middle ground maybe here, but I just wanted to bring up the history here of the conversations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may reply. I specifically know that I stated that I thought this area of town and this particular property, before we began reviewing all the details, seems ideally situated to a solar project. But that statement is based on assuming that it can meet the design requirements. I apologize, I mean, we haven't taken a vote, and I'm trying to be clear with you, my concerns, I don't believe I ever agreed that we should set aside the buffer, because I don't believe, again, the dispute about whether the buffer applies, different, different discussion. I don't believe we have the authority to waive that requirement.
And we're certainly not obligated to.
But we could, but I don't think we have that authority.
I defer to the lawyers on that one. I don't know either.
How many, how many panels is the project? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head. The application should have the size.
That's what I was looking for. I see sized an acreage, but I'm not seeing how many panels.
Well, we, Betsy Mason to the Chair, we also have made a number of concessions in terms of removing panels to accommodate, you know, previous discussion about what vegetative buffers would be, might be acceptable to the board, and now also, in order to pull the project out of the buffer zone. I mean, we are, I know I'm sounding lawyerly, but we are trying to be accommodating me divorce concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we need to close discussion, but.
Yeah. I was just, I was just curious how many panels there were. I mean, what we're suggesting would remove 54 panels from what appears to be a good-sized project. So 54 panels is going to torpedo it. That's, they're already cutting it pretty close to the.
All right, just to clarify.
Excuse me, before we, before we, just I'm discussing with the Chair, I'm open to continuing discussion and gathering input, and I'm open to advice from either Town Council or Town Planner, that on two items. Do we have the ability to waive the requirement for the 50-foot buffer, which I don't think we do, and that's informing me at the moment, and two, a resolution of the interpretation of district versus parcel, as Ms. Mason brings up. I know that as a layperson reading this article, and as a layperson who spent nine months revising this solar bylaw, the town's intention was not based on the legal hair splitting, and I understand it's very important, legal interpretation, but the individuals writing these bylaws was, were not trying to split that hair. And perhaps, for good or bad, the lay interpretation of this bylaw and the revision was the residential district, the residential, the parcels within the residential zoning area.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean.
That was the intention from laypeople.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I said this, if I may make another comment as well. I said this quickly before, but it is, in fact, a legal axiom that a board such as a planning board does have a lot of discretion and leeway in interpreting the language of its bylaws. And if you are enunciating a, an interpretation of the bylaws, a court would, would grant you a lot of discretion in that interpretation.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. I mean, my opinion is, is we, we stick to the 50-foot buffer.
That we do.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to the buffer on Blue Star Highway.
What? 50-foot buffer.
Is it, is it R 130 on the other side? It's a residential district.
Residential.
Is it, is it R 130 on the other side?
I believe so.
It's R 130 throughout this area, it was shown on the plan.
So you're looking at the buffer on Blue Star. So you're looking at a substantial change in buffer based on this discussion? Which would most likely make the project unreasonable to build.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Ken if he's got a copy of the zoning map? Because I think the, isn't the northerly boundary of the highway the limit of the R 130 district?
Yes, it is.
And then it goes to, I believe, MR 30 on the south side?
On the south side, yeah.
Except for perhaps a 500-foot strip of commercial? Do we have a copy of the plan, the zoning plan?
I don't have a copy here, you can get it online though.
I might have a copy of the zoning map.
What is ZBA?
It's certainly residential use on the other side, because that's where Sunny Acres is.
Okay.
That's right, higher density residential.
While we're, while we're resolving that, can we move on to the right of it?
Sure.
Because I think, I think this is an open, an open question, for sure.
So as I proposed, I'm willing to continue forward, and if we can come up with a way to answer those two questions before we close the public hearing, we would have a path forward.
It appears to be a commercial, general commercial on the south side of Route 25 in this location.
Is it all the way to the highway limit, Ken?
It's, the south side of the highway is the limit of the boundary of the zoning district, so that Route 25 is in the R 130 zoning district. The roadway, the route is Route 21, Route 25.
What's between 25 and Cranberry Highway?
CG, General Commercial.
All the way to the southern boundary of the Route 25?
All the way to the southern boundary, yeah. Opposite this property, yes.
Okay.
There's R, there's MR 30 to the east of the, and R 60, it looks like, to the west, but in, across from the property, the other side of Route 25 is, is General Commercial.
We talked about parcels in the new bylaw, I think.
That still puts this all in the district, in the R 130 district, though.
Yeah. And it's still, I mean, the language is still pretty clear, because it says, "as determined at the sole discretion of the permitting authority." This 50-foot, this 50-foot buffer.
And actually, to increase the size of it, but not decrease it.
Right. Okay. All right, so I guess the consensus is then that we would keep the, continue the public hearing, given time to confer with Council and/or Ken to determine the hair splitting over the residential district versus parcel question.
There is another issue as well, too. The town administrators sent a memo to the, to the planning board.
Concerning the.
Hydro geo.
The hydro geo study, yes.
Yes, that's right.
Just to see what affects.
It has on the town property, yeah.
And the land mining and how close we've gotten to the aquifer.
That's right. The idea being that there's mounting of groundwater when there's soils, and you take away those soils, the groundwater drops, and it could impact the ability to put in heat pumps in the, say, in the residential district adjacent to this property, where if you had put in a groundwater heat pump, it would be, it would be impacted by the, it would be more costly to drill to get to groundwater.
Okay. Were you made aware of that request?
Yeah, if I may. I just wanted to reiterate before I introduce Mehdi, who's on this call. The proposed grading on this site is very minimal. We're not proposing much grading in terms of what is out there today comparatively.
What's considered minimal?
Flattening out the slope just for the gravel access road, and that's essentially it. Flattening out the sand piles that are on the north side of the road, making sure that as much of the area as we can is made level. So again, the drainage patterns and the cut fill of the site is balanced. We're not proposing any export or import for this site. And then if, I may, we have a senior hydrogeologist from VHB online, Mehdi, who can speak to that specific comment as well.
Has he visited the site, or is he working strictly off of information supplied?
He has not visited the site, he's up in our Vermont office.
Mr. Chairman, just one question back. Sarah, I apologize for using your first name. In terms of regrading, you are removing five acres of trees and five acres of stumps, which will affect water flow, I believe.
Betsy Mason to the Chair, will, Lee addressing, Mr. Perry will address that in his, in his presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let's move into that then, with Mr. Perry, is it?
Mehdi.
Mehdi.
Okay. Can people hear me?
Yep.
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, thanks. I gather nobody can see me, so no great loss there. My name is Mehdi Perry. I'm a senior hydrogeologist at VHB. I'm also the Director of Water Resources here in our Vermont office. I am a certified groundwater professional, and I have been working as a consultant in groundwater hydrology since 1996, or about 26 years in this field. I have conducted dozens of hydrogeologic studies of various types of developments, often municipal water supply systems, septic systems, gravel pits, rock quarries, construction de-watering, various utilities. For this project that we're discussing tonight, the Long Road Solar Project, I have conducted a desktop study of the hydrology of the site and the surrounding area. I did hear a question as to whether I had visited the site, and no, I'm relying on existing data, published studies, and reviewing that information with, you know, an understanding of basic principles of groundwater and hydrogeology to evaluate what I believe, as a professional, this proposed project has the potential to do in terms of impacts to groundwater. So we have analyzed available data with respect to geology from United States Geological Survey, Surfaceal Geologic Mapping, Natural Resources Consulting Service, Soils Atlas, Massachusetts Geographic Information System, Geology and Water Resources Information in the Area, as well as information from Mass DEP. Actually, at the municipal property adjacent to the west, there had been an onsite investigation back in 2001, which provided some site-specific data about soils and groundwater there, as well as, of course, looked at VHB's studies to date, site plans, and test pits. In a nutshell, and just trying to move quickly and keep this fairly brief and high level, what I found at this site is we are located in a geologic deposit which is known as glacial outwash. This is fairly fine sand, loamy sands and sandy loams that originated when glaciers melted and sediment was deposited from the meltwater running off the glaciers. So surrounding the site is fairly homogenous, fairly consistent granular material sands and loam. Groundwater originates in this sort of environment from precipitation, rain falling on the ground, snow melt readily seeps in through this sand, it's fairly permeable material, water seeps vertically down, and it forms a water table, which is a zone of saturation. That's four, roughly four or so feet below the ground surface, the southeast corner of this site, where VHB performs some test pits. In this type of environment where the groundwater is unconfined and it's able to flow through the pore spaces, through this porous sand and gravel media, groundwater is going to flow generally from the high land down to lower elevations, groundwater is going to seek its own level. Ultimately, all the groundwater that originates as rain and recharge into the groundwater is going to discharge into streams, generally in this area to the east and southeast of the site. So groundwater is flowing across this property from the west and northwest, where the higher terrain is along Charge Pond Road, along the municipal garage at sort of the height of land there, seeking a groundwater discharge zone along some of the cranberry bogs that border to the east of the site, and the streams that border to the east of the site, which then flows south, ultimately flowing as surface water and stream water in the river towards the ocean. When a project such as, you know, the proposed solar project were to be built, the groundwater flow regime is not going to change. Rain falling on the solar panels will run off the panels, drip off the low edge, soak into the ground to the extent that it can. Excess runoff and heavy storm events would be collected by the stormwater system that's been designed for this project. It has some stormwater infiltration basins to allow this runoff from stormwater to seep into the ground, continue to recharge to the groundwater table, you know, as it does today, and groundwater would be able to flow underground through the water table as it does today to the south and the east. We did look at the municipal property in particular, because we do understand there were some concerns about the possible effect to that site. As I mentioned before, it is on, you know, higher terrain, and it is in the location from which groundwater flows. from which groundwater flows towards and across the site, rather than groundwater from the site running to it. Back in 2001, some work was done when, you know, underground tanks for gasoline and diesel were removed. Those reports had to be filed with Mass DEP, so that was a, a public record report that we looked at. Gave us some good information on consistent soil types, is what we observed on the site, on the solar site. In that location, where the, the ground level is a bit higher, workers dug down about 20 feet in their soil excavation, didn't find any groundwater down to a depth of 20 feet. So, you know, it's certainly worth noting, we don't have the situation with a, a high groundwater table on the municipal property, or groundwater very close to, to the ground surface. So, um, in terms of, you know, potential impacts to the groundwater table, where we've seen other sites that have been studied in much greater detail with computerized modeling, trying to predict what the groundwater flow would do when there's solar panels and stormwater infiltration basins, a rise in the groundwater table of about less than two inches was what was reported. And, you know, for a similar-sized solar project in terms of acreage, similar soils. So, you know, my professional judgment is, I would not expect anything more than, you know, at most, a two-inch rise in groundwater table from this project. If that were to happen, that would occur in the zone between the Long Road Solar Project and the cranberry bogs and the stream located to the east, because that's the direction in which groundwater from this solar site is flowing. At most, we might see in that zone, again, two-inch or less rise in the water table. Based on the absence of any vulnerable sites in that zone, I believe, in my professional opinion, that there would not be any adverse impacts to groundwater or water resources from the solar project.
Okay, thank you. One question before you start. You made a comment about groundwater level being at, at four feet or so. So, we really don't know definitively where the groundwater, the high groundwater level is on this site. Is that true?
So, VHB did do some test pits, digging into the soil and looking for soil models, and also looking for evidence of groundwater seeping into the pits. And the depth of groundwater, seasonal high groundwater table, was between 44 inches below grade and 50 inches below grade.
Okay, so roughly four feet. Do we know...
Yeah, and if I may, just as a point of clarification, I've, I've been using the term seasonal high groundwater table. And just to be clear, that term means that, you know, all groundwater levels at any site will fluctuate, and seasonally, they tend to be the highest in the spring, lowest in the late summer. So, when we say the seasonal high groundwater table is about four feet, or 44 to 50 inches, we are referring to that highest that the water table gets in the spring. It, it does drop below that during the, the summer months.
Okay, thank you. It was, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, or Charlie, if you can help me. I, I was on the impression that we had to stay four feet away from the high water?
That, that's generally accepted. If you're talking about Title V, now it's going to be five feet.
Yep.
But I was just going to look on the plan to see if there was an elevation of the cranberry bogs there, because there are two, two aspects of this site that are very clear when you look at the plan. And I want to see what the elevation of the site is with respect to those bogs, because they're probably a pretty good indication of the groundwater elevation. You figure in the, in the winter months, if they were to flood the bogs with water, you're probably going to put a foot or so of flood across the top surface of the bog. That's going to generally tell you what the high groundwater elevation would be throughout that area. If you take a look at a USGS map, and you follow the elevations of the ponds and so forth that are shown on that USGS map, what the previous speaker said, I agree with 100% in terms of the direction of groundwater flow. There's also a little stream that runs through the cranberry bogs to the east. That's probably a pretty good indicator of it. And I would agree with him, and I put into my report, which goes back to November 3rd, that I did not feel that, that stormwater was a significant issue with respect to this site. My issues were more with the setbacks, which you have already addressed and talked about, and my concern with maintaining the 50-foot buffer adjacent to Route 25, and other things that I commented on with respect to the access. But as far as this particular site, because of the soil conditions that have been talked about, and the, the cranberry bogs which run from north to south along this site, right adjacent to it, it's a pretty good indicator. One other piece of information, which you may or may not be aware of. Back in the 1970s, um, at the time that what used to be known as Seawood Springs was developed, which is on Charge Pond Road to the north of this site and north of the power line. That entire property up there was proposed for development. And there was a hydrogeologic study that was done for the Wareham Fire District back then. And because of that study, they made a determination that there was a, a break in the groundwater hydrology, such that generally speaking, the area west of Charge Pond Road flowed toward Parker Mills, and toward the series of bogs which you see in the plan to the, to the north of that sheet, and everything to the east of it sort of flowed easterly and southerly, just as what has been described to you tonight. So, that's why you have the R 60 zone on one side, and the R 130 zone on the other side of, of, uh, Charge Pond Road as being the, the divide for the zoning districts. So, there was a fairly substantial study that was done back then. But I agree, the soil conditions are nowhere near the type of soil conditions that you would expect to see significant changes in the hydrology. It's too sandy, and it just follows the general contours right down to the sea level.
Right. What, um, I guess my, my question heading back to the 48 inches, as far as staying four feet above the, is, they're proposing driving steel beams into the ground. How, how deep are those beams driven? And, and could they ultimately be sitting in the aquifer?
Well, they, they could be. Obviously, whatever steel posts they put in the ground, or whatever supports they put in the ground, have to be substantial enough and driven deep enough to provide some vertical resistance to turning over.
Right.
So, it, it may not make a difference whether it's below the high groundwater or not. They could very well be, if they had to, go to bedrock. So, it, it's not the kind of an issue that, um, I think is a real concern, the depth of those mounting posts. It has to do with stability. So if the idea was to, you only had four feet of material, and you were tempted to keep every part of construction above the high groundwater, they probably wouldn't be stable in that kind of an environment.
Right.
They're going to have to be driven deeper, most likely.
But, but does having steel driven into the ground, into the groundwater, does it create any, any type of a, of a corrosion issue, or of a contamination issue?
If there's no oxygen present, then you don't get rust. You don't get oxidation.
I would assume that these posts are sitting on panels that are galvanized. I'm, I'm not sure. I haven't looked in the detail of what that is. But if they were galvanized, I don't think there would be an issue.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a question I hadn't thought of first, and then I'll go back to Mr. Perry in thanking him. What type of posts are you planning for the, you're not using treated timbers, right?
Correct, no.
Okay. And there's nothing, no, nothing, it, it, the, what do you call, um, materials that aren't reactive, whatever. It, it's not, the materials you're going to use driving into the post into the ground will not introduce contaminants into the aquifer, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't think of that till this discussion. So, uh, I want to thank Mr. Perry for his summary. And, uh, either to you, Mister Chairman, or through you to the applicant. He made quite a, a long list describing his thought process and analysis, and at two or three points, he offered his professional opinion. To me, that seems, that should be a report, right, of the materials that, or the materials he reviewed, his conclusions drawn, and stamped and signed as a professional engineer, which is what we're requiring, um...
Bearing Hill.
At other solar projects. And I appreciate both his conclusion and Charlie's conclusion. The impact should be negligible, but at least then we have it on record. Professional engineer, here's his analysis. Because we have had citizens introduce severe concern, not severe, their, their concerns are very severe to them, about the impact to the aquifer of this project. And while a lot of that impact are pre-existing conditions, we want to make sure that the analysis of the current conditions doesn't make it worse. So, is that a, can we ask that? Is that...
That's a, that's a yes for me.
Through you, to the applicant, is that something?
Absolutely.
We could get Mr. Perry to produce a report that says what he just said, and sign it and stamp it?
Mehdi, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that report is, is being put together.
Thank you, that would be very helpful.
Yep.
The report is being put together. I can sign it. And my professional certification is a certified groundwater professional. Unlike engineers, I don't actually have a stamp, but I can sign it. I can put my certification number on it, and I can certainly attest to it.
Okay, thank, thank you. That was, I, I, normally from an engineering report, we would get a stamp and a seal. So whatever, whatever's appropriate for your certification, I think that would be okay. Right, is that okay, Charlie? Would that be appropriate?
Yes, I think that that would be acceptable. He's, um, working in an, an engineering office that I'm familiar with. So that would be acceptable to me.
Okay.
And Ken, you're okay with that, that certification?
Yes, I am.
I, I'm, I don't know if any of the board has any other com... Thank you, that would, that would meet my request.
It might be helpful, so long as you're trying to collect information, be to, um, just get an, uh, approximate elevation for these cranberry bogs, too, because they will impact the site. It'll give you a little bit better idea as to where the site sits with respect to that elevation. Give you a little bit more comfort with respect to the groundwater depth and so forth.
We can look at...
It shows, it, it really doesn't show them on the site plan, because you're not right adjacent to them, but it's on the other side of that little stream that goes through there. So it would be helpful to have that information, I think.
Can we include that?
We can take a look at LiDAR data. There is also some limited information we have on the survey. Again, as you mentioned, it's not our site, so we, our survey crew doesn't have all of the, the grading information. But on page...
How were the contours established?
Um, by an aerial survey, I believe.
Then you must be able to interpret the cranberry bog elevation. It's, it's right there.
Yep, so, and I just wanted to point out, yeah, we'll take a look at whatever available information we have. On SV dash four, we do have an invert elevation of 15.3 feet at the cranberry bog.
Perhaps a pipe that goes underneath the roadway or something. That's, that's not what I'm talking about.
Those are typically set at the bottom of the bog elevation, but again, we can...
I'm familiar with cranberry bogs.
But we can take a look at that.
We need the top of the bog elevation from the north end all the way to the south end.
Charlie?
One other concern, Mister Chairman. At our last meeting where we discussed this project, we heard, uh, public comment from a gentleman who made the argument that, uh, we should not or could not approve this project because of the pending investigation of it.
Of the soil removal?
Yes.
Yes.
And, um, I am unable to, to weigh the, uh, the strength of his argument. What I would like is if perhaps you or the board could consult with legal counsel so that we can assure ourselves that we have thought over this issue, and we have, we have a handle on it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Ken, is Rich going to be available Thursday?
Uh, he, he could be. I'll ask and see if there's available a slot to, uh, to get you and I in to have a discussion with him.
Yeah, if we could have a sit-down and address that, that would be good.
Then you could ask about this.
We can ask, correct, right.
Yes, at that same meeting, then you could get clarity on the, the...
On the definition of the residential.
Right.
Okay. The last question that I had, uh, at least for me, was, um, the right-of-way. So, this right-of-way, obviously, is not just for this project, it's for other landlord, landowners past it. And you're proposing putting in the utilities in the roadway. So, do you have a plan for keeping that roadway open and available to the other landowners at all times? How do you, how do you address that?
So I will let Betsy answer that question, just in regards to the legal wording of those easements.
Thank you, Sarah. Betsy Mason to the chair, and through the chair to the board. Yes, I mean, we, we basically would have to reach an agreement with, uh, the easement holders who would be impacted by the temporary construction. And obviously here, that would be just the town. But we would, uh, you know, hope to reach a reasonable reciprocal, reciprocal, sorry, easy for me to say, reciprocal, um, easement agreement. I don't know if that's the proper title for it. But essentially, um, ensuring that during construction that there would be no major interference. I mean, we would, we would reach a reasonable agreement with the town regarding, um, best times for construction and things of that nature, of course.
We, we would, I would anticipate that we'd have a copy of that agreement in the file?
Yes, I would, I would assume so. But, but yes, that, that would be something. I mean, I guess what I would request respectfully is that, you know, perhaps it could be a condition of site plan approval, that, um, you know, that agreement be reached prior to construction. And then, um, our, our respective engineering folks can, can sit down and, and... Also, obviously, uh, the municipal maintenance facility, uh, folks would be involved in determining how best to avoid, uh, or mitigate construction impacts.
A disruption, yeah. Well, I mean...
Yeah, minimize disruption.
Looking at the right-of-way path, I don't see how it's really going to disrupt municipal maintenance at all. It doesn't appear that they use it for access. I'm just thinking of the landowners, um, to the east of the project. If they need to access their bogs and, and conduct business, they need to be able to get there, so...
Yes, and, and we actually do have a model agreement, uh, for that based on the four Blue Wave projects, uh, to the east of our proposed project site. Ironically, a number of the parcels to the east that are impacted are owned by Mr. Fletcher. But, but as for the other property owners, they have already, uh, they have already entered into a similar agreement, with, with, uh, Blue Wave regarding the, the use of those, uh, use of the easements. And here, you know, there'd be obviously some, some addition to, to address, uh, construction disruptions, disruptions possibly caused by construction to the cranberry bog owner/operators, and, and when best to do the work to avoid impacts on their growing season and harvesting season. Things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. So...
Question on that?
Yes.
Uh, the order of taking easement that's provided, the wording in, in it is that there are necessary utilities allowed in the easement. Uh, I don't think the, um, uh, the power from a PB array is necessary utilities for the, uh, for the use of the site. I would question whether or not that was contemplated by the, by the easement. And I think, uh, interpretation of that wording would be appropriate as well, too, by legal counsel.
Uh, Betsy Mason to the chair, if I may. The, the, within the right-of-way, Charge Pond Road right-of-way, Eversource provides a distribution service line, that's 22.8 KB. That same distribution line, uh, 28, 22.8 KB goes to both the municipal maintenance facility and to the, I guess, the short cran facility to the south there. It would not be any different than, uh, the, the size and capacity of the distribution line. That would, would go, that probably goes to the, the cranberry bogs from a different location. Uh, and that would go to any other use that Mr. Fletcher would use, um, would, would use his property for. For example, if he were to build housing development instead of a solar facility, it would be that same 22.8 KB line coming in. So there's no, uh, there's no qualitative difference in the utility line... So there's no, there's no qualitative difference in the utility line that would be going to this facility as compared to a housing development or a commercial industrial facility, or a facility like the municipal maintenance facility or the Shorecrin facility to the south. I mean, we're not, we're not talking something 115 KB, we're not talking transmission line, we're not talking anything greater than that.
To be honest, I, I think the question was more, not so much the right to put the, the utilities in the road, but more so just to keep the road available to the land users, the landowners.
How many users are there? How many people have a right to use that easement?
That I don't know.
Who, who controls it right now? Because right now, it's gated, it's locked. You need a key to get down there. I've seen Shorecrin open it, and I've seen the people who run the solar farm two parcels over. Any other keys, or is it going to be a mutual key, or how is it going to be controlled?
That's something that we would be open to discussing with the town. I, I know that Shorecrin, obviously, they own, you know, the cranberry bogs to the east, and then the Blue Wave solar facilities to the east. I don't know that each of them has access by that access road, but they may actually use that as their, as their, you know, maintenance slash service access. As for who has a key, I mean, that's something that I guess we would need to discuss with the town. I am certain that the fire department probably has a key, because I know that's typically required. But, you know, as for what goes past the parcel on which the project would be located, gates beyond us, I don't, I, I can't speak to that.
Because the locks were changed about five months ago, and are you working with Shorecrin? Because they're already delivering their panels for their solar array, which is right after this one. I mean, they're already delivering panels. Are you, you're talking about digging up the right-of-way, I'm sure both of them are going to. Are you working together?
Actually, we certainly can reach out to them. I, I don't, I, I myself have not had any discussions with Shorecrin, I don't know, I don't know that we have, and I guess Haley Orvadell, who's our director of Milton, Haley, if you're still on the line.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive on this, but I believe they might be having their own direct access through their own property all the way to the substation, if I'm not mistaken.
That's, yeah, that, the substation to the north, and they're coming down that way, right? I believe that's, I believe that's the case. But we can certainly confirm with them, and to the extent that they are also thinking about any, you know, placing any utilities within the access road, which would certainly be within their rights under the easement, we would, you know, we could coordinate with them so that there isn't a, you know, a double tearing of a-
Well, they use it almost every day. I think we're talking about two different companies using the same easement, and they're both looking at improvements and running electric lines through. There's got to be some sort of coordination.
Yeah, I think what we're seeing is if, if there is, but we actually don't think that there is, because we think that those other projects are going straight to the substation, which, through their direct property to access. But if there is, certainly, we would, we would try to work together. We can reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah, I don't believe they're using the same access road from Charge Pond, you know, the same, the same easement, part of the easement from Charge Pond Road to our parcel, but if they are, yes, we will coordinate with them.
All right, thank you. All right, so before I ask for public comment, I just want to make sure that we have our talking points straight. So we have, hopefully, we could schedule a meeting with Rich Bowen on Thursday to discuss the interpretation of the residential district, which we and Ms. Mason have differing views on. What is the status of any possible pending litigation concerning the removal of the sand? If there is any, if there is, where does it stand so that we know if the property is even available for this kind of project?
I think the question, Mr. Chairman, is whether, if there is a pending investigation or litigation, as the commenter said, does that affect the planning board's jurisdiction?
Correct, right. Again, the 50-foot buffer, which will tie into the discussion with Rich Bowen, the hydrology report that Mr. Manny's going to do for us, and keeping the access road open and available to the landowners to the east of your project, so that any construction that you do on your utilities doesn't impede their availability to get to their property. Mr. Schultz?
There was one more item, Mr. Rowley's request for the topo.
Oh, like the cranberry bogs?
Yeah, the, the flow lines.
That can be included in the hydrogeology report.
It was just, he was enumerating open items, so I just wanted to make sure it was-
It, it could be an insert in that report, so long as the elevation of each section of the bog is shown. Okay, yeah, no problem.
We can do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question or request also with respect to that electric line that would go through the easement. I'd like to know the size of the line, how much voltage is being generated that goes through that line?
Okay, can you-
I'm sure it's not 110 volts.
No, I believe we're talking 22.8 KB.
I don't think it's 110 volts.
I think we're talking a standard distribution line, 22.8 KB.
That, that's, standard distribution line is a very general statement, we'd like to know what the-
Right, 22.8 KB.
22.8 KB?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
For those that might not know, that's 22,000 volts.
Right.
The town might be interested in how much voltage actually is going in the ground on their property, which they still own, irregardless of the easements?
Yep.
And, and Betsy Mason to the chair, that, that same size distribution line is actually already going into the town's property, serving the municipal maintenance facility.
Okay, well, that, that'll be a talking point when we, when we meet with Mr. Bowen. Thank you, Charlie.
One more thing before you go back to public comment.
Yep.
I, I wanted to address something that Attorney Mason said at the beginning, just for clarification. They've adjusted the site boundaries so that they've pulled back from the wetlands area, and they're going to withdraw their notice of intent with Conservation Commission. Ms. Mason said, therefore, we don't need to wait for anything from CONCOM, that's not quite correct. We do need a letter from Conservation Commission-
Stating that they have no jurisdiction.
Stating that they have no jurisdiction.
Yeah, true.
Which is, should be straightforward, but it's still a-
It's still a document that needs to be obtained.
Yes.
Is this all going to be shown on revised site plan that we'll get a look at? Because this certainly isn't enough.
It will be, yep, it will be adjusted in the site plans, and we'll have hard copies.
Okay.
Haley Orvadell, sorry, not to add one more thing to your list. I know there was no time to review the decom, but just to make sure that stays on the list to clear it out. I think those were pretty minor requests to change.
Yep. Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else from the board, I would open it up to the public for continued public comment. I know there's been quite a bit of public comment on this project already. The only thing that I would ask for and expect is, please don't re, just don't go over stuff we've already heard. If you've got some new information, by all means, let's hear it, but if it's something that's already been presented to the board, there's no reason to go over it a second time.
Thank you. Barry Cosgrove, pleasure to see you all in person, to thank you for your service at the town, and welcome to the new town plan as well. Mention was made of a big swing. There hasn't been a big swing. What's happened is, as it's supposed to be in a public hearing, this body has been introduced to information it didn't have before, and now you're able to contemplate that information and hopefully make a make-informed decision about whether or not this property can support this project, and we continue to insist that it doesn't. I'll point out the obvious, there's been no reasonable opportunity to review all the new information that's been provided here, and in the future, these meetings will continue to be continued, to be continued, if we all don't have that reasonable opportunity. The issue here is economics. This applicant is trying to shoehorn as many solar panels into this property as he can, and they're negotiating for 25 feet, and you do not have, this body does not have jurisdiction to men that 50-foot barrier. It made mention that, you know, it would be a major undertaking to have the type of buffer you want. Well, they have experience at it, because it was a major undertaking to rip it out without appropriate permits. The notion that just withdrawing the application from Conservation ends it? Fiction. Fiction. The Conservation Commission decides whether it has jurisdiction or not, and that could include requests for determinations of applicability by third parties. On the easement, there's positively no doubt that the right thing to do here is to have an independent, third-party, land court-certified title examiner render an opinion on this. It's unimaginable that an easement that was issued decades ago, before any of us knew anything about solar panels, could contemplate 22,000 volts going underground on town property, no less, on the issue of district versus parcel. We're not splitting hairs there, that's splitting atoms. It's in complete collision with common sense. All residential districts are established precisely in contemplation of future usage. The idea is, you don't want to have a pot shop in the parking lot of a grammar school, so you set up a district for that reason. So whoever's trying to tell you that the future doesn't matter, fiction. The decommissioning plan, we haven't seen it, we can't comment. My understanding of what the town has asked of this applicant is an independent, independent assessment of the hydrological changes, from the beginning of time, excuse me, from the beginning of time of ownership of the co-owner to date, not just what's changed in the meantime. And we will present an expert to rebut what an independent person would provide. This presentation tonight with zero background, zero documents, zero maps, is not an opinion. On the question of how deep are the poles and whether they matter, I submit to you, we will provide expert testimony that says it matters a ton. And it's pretty interesting, the one end of the project, it's 44 inches approximately, but at the other end of the project, you've got to go 20 feet to get the water. We will present some testimony on that once we see the plans and we can speak to them in detail. On the issue of, is there an investigation or isn't there? That's exactly the question to ask. Three meetings ago, I said ask. I hope you will, I know the answer you're going to get. And what this applicant is in effect asking you to do is to partner with them in a manner of which they can start building before the investigation can happen. That would be interfering with an investigation on the topic of being in collision with common sense.
One more minute, Barry, if you don't mind. You have five minutes now, so.
Do you have any questions? Is me?
I, I personally don't. I've, I've read everything that you've written, and I've listened very carefully to everything that you've submitted, so I, I personally know all of your concerns and obviously take them very seriously when weighing in on this.
I'd just ask two questions through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant. The groundwater analysis that was conducted, was that conducted based on the 1961 U.S. Weather Bureau TP-40?
Do we still have the-
Mehdi, are you still?
Yes, I am still here.
So if you could, if you could revert to that question?
The question was whether the groundwater analysis that I conducted included the 1960s Weather Bureau TP-20, it did not specifically include that study.
TP-40 was the question.
TP-40, no.
It did not, thank you. And finally, the second question through you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, you probably should know this, where is the transformer physically located in this map? And can we please get a copy of these, if we could, please?
The, all the documents for the project should be up on the planning board website.
Located just south of the access road. There are two transformers off the, behind the screen.
Okay, got it, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time, sir. Any of the board have questions for Mr. Cosgrove? Nope. All right, thank you. Annie?
Annie Hayes, 52, Farmers Lane, Wareham. I would like to address Mehdi about the, did you just say that you used the MAS DEP TP-20 data for precipitation?
No, we did not use that.
What did you use, the 40?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
What did you use?
In the study that I conducted was a groundwater hydrology study, it was not a precipitation or quantitative stormwater modeling study.
Okay, well, I'm, I want to address the quantitative, because I will then address what flows off the panels. This, I've seen two projects recently that have had the same conclusion, that the 1961 data is 60 years old, although the DEP continues to allow use of this TP-4 data. And Patrick Garner, who assessed 140 to Honit, said that the climate-aware, science-driven engineering firms in the Commonwealth have shifted to precipitation data generated by the Northeast Regional Climate Center NRCC that works in collaboration with Cornell University and the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and the data is constantly updated to reflect real-time precipitation data from all over New England. So the difference between the 1961 and the current is the 100-year storm used on Honit, for example, by Beals and Thomas, is seven inches, and the NRCC 100-year storm in 2021 is 8.62. So consequently, all stormwater infrastructure designed for the sites may be undersized by the same 20%. Use of accurate precipitation quantities is critical, where pine forests or forests would be eliminated, I'm not sure that's the case, I'm not totally up to date on this one, and replaced by solar panel and herbaceous grasses. The reason that I'm really interested in the stormwater is because I have been interested in the, you know, the construction of solar panels for a long time. One thing I have is a solar scorecard that was done by Silicon Valley Toxic Coalition, and it scores on a number of environmental impacts. One is module toxicity and recycled content. I know, for example, that Longi Solar for, for Ferring Hill have zeros across, that's the lowest score you can imagine, the lowest score you could possibly get, zeros in all categories.
Yeah, I mean, they, they don't apply to this project, so-
No, I know, but I'm, I'm getting to it, because of the toxicity. That has led me to be looking constantly at panels, and recently, I am seeing at the national level, at the state level, at all levels, the, what I hadn't seen before, because it's really just accelerating, is the addressing of PFASs, which are polyfluoral alkals, and I don't know if any of you know about these, but these are the forever chemicals that are nanoparticles that leach very nicely into the water, and they are everywhere. And in the federal EPA guidelines that are new from April 28, 2022, there's a section that is fact sheets from Massachusetts. I know for one that Maura Healey has sued- I know for one that Maura Healey has sued 13 manufacturers of PFAS in the state. And it says here PFAS may be generated, oh, sorry, MAS DEP's solar guidance policy model certification template approval letter and SOP for staff state that public water supplies shall use solar panels and solar sheets that do not contain PFAS. It is a PWS's public water, whatever that other word, supplies responsibility to ask the manufacturer. So it's the town's, the municipality's responsibility. And what I then have researched and have an excellent document on is all of the research, all of the reasons that communities are outlawing and outlawing PFASs on solar panels and insisting upon prior certification that the panels that are being used contain no PFASs. So then it gets into the intrusion into the aquifer. And although there may be no, what you said, Jane, in an anoxic environment, nanoparticles certainly can infiltrate into that waters, into that sole source aquifer. And that is happening everywhere in this country. And the regulation is coming on like gangbusters. So I can't give you all of the data on that, but I will submit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Hayes. All of the documents that she made reference to, we should get copies.
I will.
That score sheet, all those things, I mean, they were interesting, but trying to...
No, I know, and you need to see them.
Right. Yeah, they need to be considered. We need to have them.
As does the applicant. It's fair to them to see these data, too.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else from the, sir?
Mr. Chairman, my name's David Howard Fletcher. I don't usually attend these meetings. I don't usually attend...
And I apologize, I have a little hard hearing as well as being blind as a bat.
Oh, okay.
What's your last name?
David Fletcher.
Fletcher. Nice to meet you, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you. Likewise. I am the property owner, as you know. I don't usually attend these meetings because I usually prefer to leave it to the professionals. But I am here tonight to clarify, maybe if any members of the board have questions for me, a lot of the things that I heard discussed tonight, much of the information is not accurate and somewhat erroneous. I'd like to make mention to some of the things Barry brought to your attention about there being an investigation. I can assure you, as I would be the party being investigated, that there is not an investigation going to take place today, tomorrow, or the next day.
Well, I will be able to determine that.
You will be able to if you speak to Derek Sullivan and Richard Bowen.
I'm going to speak with town council, but either way, we'll get the information, whether it's one way or another.
As far as the, and I don't know if this really makes much of a difference, and I think Mr. Schultz seemed like he was, and Mr. Corbett were aware, the solar panels, the array, will indeed be beneath the mean average lay of the land because I had dug the ground out on a prior endeavor where I was going to build cranberry bog there. That was the reason I initially dug that land out. At a later date, I decided that cranberries weren't the best use for that property and that solar would be, make more sense. So, yes, the elevation is lower, and that is actually, in a sense, I would say it's something positive for that site with regard to solar. Because in the event somebody did clear the trees on the town-owned land, they still wouldn't, passersby still would not be able to see the solar array because it's below grade. So they would look in at the cleared land, and it would look like a plain, and they'd be able to see Matt Beaton's cranberry bogs, but their line of sight would clearly go right over the height of the panels as they're only six and a half to eight feet from the ground. I wasn't aware if all the board members, you know, realized that aspect of that array. And one of the other things that seemed to come up, and it's came up in past hearings, was the stability of the slopes. The slopes are indeed about two to one, which is sharper than the typical three to one that, you know, you'd build typically. But I did that because I wanted to utilize as greater base area that I could by minimizing the slope encroachment on the bog bed. So, but in terms of the slopes being stabilized, I stabilized them myself. And anytime any members of the board or Mr. Rowley would like to come down to the site, I personally will walk each and every one of you around the perimeter to visually assess for yourselves, you know, the stability of those slopes. They have anywhere between two and six-inch trees growing on them. In the past, there was some question with erosion. In 2018, myself and Mr. David Minard, Highway Superintendent, there was one little spot where I was having an erosion problem. It's been addressed and stabilized. And when I say a little spot, it was the width of these two tables on a roughly 1,300-foot line. So again, and anytime any of the members of the board or Mr. Rowley would like to visit the site, I am always available.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant, based on something that Mr. Fletcher said. I had said earlier that one of the concerns about buffers and the buffer zone and the plantings was to minimize or eliminate visibility. One thing that we've done on other projects, and I think I said this, was to do sightlines. Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Corbett talked about this being a depressed, a depressed piece of property or area. Would it be possible to do a couple of sightlines to demonstrate the visibility impact with that, you know, so we can, if we resolve the buffer issue some other way?
Yep.
But just an idea of what the sightlines are going to be?
Yeah, we can pull those together.
Thanks. That would also help us visualize some of the questions that we're trying to work our way through.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. And we've been requesting sightlines for other projects, so just keeping in fairness, I think it's a good suggestion.
It would help us visualize what we're discussing.
Yep.
If I could make, without interrupting anyone, if I could make one more comment with regard to those sightlines, in the event that the town were to clear that property and utilize it, another mitigating measure that could be taken by VHB and Long Road would be right on the property line, which is a rough, here or there, the top of the slope, they could install an eight-foot-long chain-link fence. And I don't know if this would be, they'd be amenable to it, but if they installed an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with blinders without disturbing my vegetation that I worked very hard to establish, that would also mitigate the sightline even further beyond what you would see in the event the town land is at some point cleared of all vegetation.
Okay. That's certainly an option to consider.
You can't see through a chain-link fence that has the vinyl blinders.
Right. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, Mr. Fletcher, do you have an estimate of how many yards of material were taken out of the property to create the bog or try to create the bog?
It was roughly 80,000 to 100,000 yards, and that was a topic of discussion back in 2018, Mr. Buckland. And like I say, without informing, you know, people that don't need to be informed about that, those discussions, Mr. Bowen and Mr. Sullivan will be able to clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your input.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a hand up? Okay.
Hi, my name is Jessica, and this is my first time on Zoom, and, you know, I've been listening from the beginning, and I'm curious, and I apologize.
One thing, Jessica, before we get too far, what's your last name?
Bell, B as in boy, E L L.
And whereabouts do you reside in relationship to the project?
So I'm located in Butler's Cove, but it's been a concern of mine because of the water source and the fact that, you know, we have, I'm not even sure, this was one of my questions, how many solar farms do we currently have in Wareham?
Current, I believe, is 19.
Okay. So does this, you know...
Approved and pending, but, yeah.
Yeah.
19 was the number we ended on, right, Ken?
Right.
Okay. So if you got, if this is approved, would this, would this lead to a vote by Wareham, by the citizens in Wareham, if the town approves us?
I'm sorry. Say that again. I didn't understand.
Sure. So if this is approved to move forward, would this lead to a vote by the citizens of Wareham?
No, would not.
In order to go through?
No, no. This would be a decision made by the planning board.
Okay. Okay. It's just a concern again because of, you know, I don't feel comfortable with someone telling me that, or a professional that hasn't been on-site to evaluate anything, you know, that doesn't, most likely doesn't live here, I believe lives in Vermont, I'm assuming, that there's no real repercussions, but it's the Wareham citizens that will ultimately be impacted by this. So I'm surprised to hear that it wouldn't lead to a vote.
Well, I appreciate your concern, and the board would certainly take into account the quality of the reports put forward by the hydrologist expert. But as far as a vote by the citizens, they've already, they've already been asked to vote on the solar bylaw, and that, they made their voices heard, now it's us to act on it.
Okay. And sorry, one additional comment, if, you know, if there could be an outside party that could evaluate the water source, I'm not comfortable in the fact that, you know, someone being hired by this company is, you know, reiterating exactly what their client ultimately wants. It's biased. And again, they haven't been on-site, so it makes me extremely uncomfortable.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your concern and your participation in this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for letting us, you know, letting folks listen to this. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think we have a pretty good list of items that we're going to touch on with town council, with Derek Sullivan, just to run down it one last time, just so we're all on the same page. So the interpretation of the residential district, the question about the removal of the sand, again, the 50-foot buffer, which is associated with the residential district interpretation, the hydrology report, keeping access to the right-of-way open, and the amount of voltage that would be running under that right-of-way, the topography for the cranberry bogs, which will be included in the hydrology report, letter from CONCOM stating that they don't have jurisdiction over the project, get to review the revised decommissioning plan, and some sightline study.
One thing that may want to be added to that consideration of the amount of service going through the utility lines is what the physical size of that will be, because we know how much of a right-of-way there is there, and there are vaults that would probably have to be built to accommodate the conduit, and so knowing something about the physical...
The physical dimensions of the transmission line?
Physical characteristics of the transmission line would be helpful, too.
In addition, there is another project underway using the same area, and we say they have to work together somehow.
Yeah. Why tear up the road twice?
In that same discussion on that topic, perhaps they could indicate that they've made contact with the other group and...
And not that this is their particular issue, but Charlie, you had, you know, 22,000 volts, there's a lot of voltage running under the line, but if we've got their 22,000 and Sherkrans 22,000, now you get a lot of voltage going on.
Yeah. The difference here is that in other places where you have gone underground almost immediately off of the public way into the site, there's one in particular which was done on County Road a number of years ago, in which they initially had overhead lines going in, and then they were convinced to put the transformers close to the road so there's only one pole going into the site. It's on their property. In this particular case, it's on land that is not owned by them. They have the right to access the property through the easement, and for whatever interpretation you want to put on and the language that's in the easement and utilities, I'm sure back in 1984, '85, whenever they made the taking, they never considered solar panels. So I think we need to bear that into account. But to put that type of voltage underground without knowing what the protection would be and whether or not there might have to be some insurance with respect to that line, since it's on property that's owned by the town and it's within an easement that's granted to other people, I think those are legitimate questions to have some answers on.
Okay. So... All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could just iterate one thing that was mentioned earlier, and that can be the final.
Moving on.
Absolutely. Just mentioning again that the voltage of the line is the same voltage of the connections to the two municipal lots as well. It's not...
Right. It's in addition to now.
No, understood. I just wanted to...
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. At that point, I would take, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on 33-21, Site Plan Review, Wareham PVI, PV1 LLC, Zero Route 25.
So would.
Wait till what date certain?
Excuse me, till what date certain? Because we've already blocked the next planning board meeting for the hydrogeologist at Ferring Hill, and given the amount of discussion and information, I'm not sure we could fit both of them.
No, not if we're going to have, you know, some smelt like ANRs or something like that on there. You're right. So, Ken, do we have time to get to the 11th of July?
Yeah, we do. If they agree.
11th of July work for you?
Haley and Betsy, if you guys don't have any concern with that?
Betsy Mason, yes, July 11th works for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
We could get that in.
Very much.
Writing?
Yes.
Okay.
An email will be fine.
Email will be fine. Perfect.
Need to vote on that.
Okay. So again, the motion to continue the public hearing till July 11th was made by Sam Corbett.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kyle Schutz for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 600. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for a courtesy? Could we take five minutes before the next?
Absolutely.
I planned to make it till nine o'clock, but now I'm no longer sure.
The best-laid plans.
So, do we need a motion on that, or can we just take a five-minute break?
Just take a five-minute break.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that, Ken. It's late, however. Okay.
It's good to stand up.
Yeah, yep.
Usually the case, depends on the chair.
Is the applicant here for Fearing Hill?
That's right.
See this gentleman with the plaid shirt?
Oh, yeah. I should probably take advantage of this, too.
Good.
Good, how are you? Good.
Yeah, if we, if we could get them to continue waiting on that, that'd be great. Yeah, let's try July eleventh and, and say that, uh, we'll push them out and see if we can do that. The Fearing Hill Road is, is a very controversial one. That's what Joe Shanahan here is all about. Yeah, right. Yeah, so we get through, uh, two forty-six Marion Road and, uh, what is that one involved? Talking actually easy. Probably want you to write, uh, staff reports on these, you know, then you get a, you know, comfort feeling about bylaws and what the relations mean. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, well, if it wasn't for the, the case where the industrial land is, couldn't be accessed through the residential property.
I've been a townie all my life, so. It's just those things like that, and then it thinks just snowballed and got worse and worse and then another question came up in my mind, further along. This one I gotta keep.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's just, it'd be time, it's time for reappointment, I said I wanna leave, but, I just, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be all right to endorse this A and R, but, uh, I still have a question as to the, uh... If you don't need...
Because all of us like to come here because we're in a, a good location and if you're a landowner, trying to give you a hard time for a developer coming here watching through the...
All set? Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, thank you for the short break. Now we will continue on with the public hearings. Three dash twenty-two, site plan review, five, five Doty Street, Jason St. Martin, map one oh three, lot ten twenty-seven, they have requested a continuance. Um, I guess there was some documents or whatnot that went back and forth with you, Charlie?
There's an email that they submitted that, uh, said a date, but I think maybe what we should do is try to get them to go to July eleventh as well, too.
Go to what?
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
They, they asked for, uh, June twenty-seventh, but, uh, we're trying, uh, hold that one for...
Yeah, we wanna keep that date clear. Okay, so they're requesting a continuance to July eleventh?
No, they want the twenty-seventh.
We're giving them the eleventh.
We're gonna give them the eleventh.
Yes, that's the problem with not having people requesting continuances show up at the meeting. That was a requirement that we've overlooked.
That's the problem when we don't have applicants who are requesting continuances come to the meeting. We're required to get their agreement and if they're not here, we're subject to what they say and that's not acceptable.
Well, I, I don't know if that's true. If they don't, if they don't appear to discuss the continuance date, aren't, aren't they kinda giving up their right to deciding what the date's gonna be collectively and leaving it in our hands?
That's the interpretation, yeah.
That's my interpretation.
I'll go with that.
Okay, so we respectfully deny the request for the June twenty-seventh and we will schedule five Doty Street for July eleven.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue three twenty-two, site plan review, five Doty Street, James, Jason St. Martin, map one oh three, lot ten twenty-seven, parking lot until July eleven.
Second.
We have a motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Um, Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chair vote aye, six zero zero, to continue to July eleven. Seven dash twenty-two, site plan review, two forty-six Marion Road, two forty-six Marion Road LLC, map fifty-five, lot ten ten, parking lot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Uh, good evening, Brad Bertola, J C Engineering. At the last public hearing, uh, there were a couple outstanding questions that this board wanted addressed and it pertains to access across the front of the building and some buffering or concerns of the neighbors regarding the proposed work in close proximity to their property line. Uh, just passed out a revised plan, a majority of the changes will take place on sheets four, uh, three and four. Across the front of the building, we pinched down the width to create one lane, uh, approximately thirteen feet wide. Uh, this is going to involve, uh, removing some of the pavement and adding some green space as well as shifting some of the parallel parking spaces away from the state highway layout line to provide additional separation between a post-rail fence or decorative fence across the front. Uh, that'll, that'll allow for parking to take place without impacting any of the fence and allow the passengers to exit their vehicles safely without, with space between the fence. Uh, we've also adjusted the parking count just to the south of the building, so coming in the entrance, the southern entrance off of Marion Road and as you're driving basically to the east on the left-hand side as you're passing the building, I lengthened that parking count from seven units to eight parking spaces. In doing so, it shrinks the aisle width that's leading from the front of the structure uh, down to thirteen feet, which is adequate width for, uh, parallel parking spaces and allows space to put a do not enter sign. Uh, so this basically should deter any vehicles from coming in off of Marion Road, taking a left and exiting onto Brown Street. Uh, there would basically be an entrance only on, on Brown Street. I do, uh, note that I anticipate there's a chance that a delivery vehicle may wanna back out or, uh, pull down Brown Street and back into, uh, the loading area so they have easier access to that ramp. I would assume that the deliveries would be a lot, lot less frequently than the customer parking, so that would be, uh, minimal times where they would need to, uh, either exit that area onto Brown Street. I think, uh, providing a lot of green space would be a benefit and, uh, we did shrink down the parking count from four down to three across the front. Uh, the other couple changes I made, uh, to the plans, uh, involve the grading, actually we'll stay on the same page. I did increase the parking count from seven, uh, spaces to eight spaces on all the, uh, most easterly, uh, strip of parking and the closest to Brown Street. Uh, I added, uh, one space in that area while still maintaining some buffering between the parking lot and Brown Street. Uh, the last, uh, major chain, uh, change involves some of the grading, uh, across the, the rear of the property. It'll probably, you'll probably have to switch between, uh, sheets three and four. Originally I had the twenty-foot buffer area, uh, filled in to kinda create a, a mound and then planted with white pine trees. Uh, the neighbors had some concern over, uh, use of that property. I know, they know it's not their property, it's something that they've been using since they bought it. They weren't aware that the property lines were in those locations and we discussed this with the, uh, the applicant and relocating the fill or lessening the amount of fill in that area would not impact the parking area and would also, uh, help maintain an area where they had used in the past to, you know, walk equipment to pump their septic system or, or drive back there, uh, for access. Uh, so in doing so, the original location of the privacy fence that was on the property line was moved to be about four feet off the back of the parking spaces and just behind that, kind of on that small little slope, uh, we proposing a row of arbovites. Uh, I believe the arbovites will probably provide a little better buffering than the white pines. Uh, they'll be, uh, adequately spaced so that it'll kinda almost create a hedge and eventually they'll, they'll go over the top of the height of the six-foot fence, so the, the fence will provide the initial buffering between, uh, the parking lot and the abutter and the, the vegetation will, uh, grow taller than that. Uh, the neighbors will see the vegetation, the other side will see the fence. Uh, I believe these were the, you know, two major concerns that this board had and I'm hoping you agree with me on the front. Uh, we're trying to maintain as many parking spaces as possible. We obviously would have liked to use more land area, but because of the increase in impervious area, we're required to have some drainage, uh, areas provided and at the same time, we provided some buffering, uh, between the drainage area and the adjacent residential use. Uh, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on these, uh, revised plans.
Uh, the, the one thing that I see, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the entrance from Brown Street into the front area where the proposed loading, uh, spot is, is, that's still a concern as far as that hundred-foot number from the center line of Route Six to that, that driveway entrance?
Well, it is in terms of meeting the, the requirements of the, of the bylaw, yeah. But it, it means that those three spaces that are out in the front are gonna have to use Brown Street to get there.
Correct.
It, I don't know whether people coming from either direction would recognize that. Maybe those that frequent the restaurant on a regular basis would understand it after a couple of trips there, but I don't think the general public are gonna, gonna realize that, uh, that they'd be able to utilize that area. Um, I realize you're cutting down on the number of, uh, spaces. Evidently we've still got, what, thirty-three? Brad?
Thirty-three now, yes.
Thirty-three. I just wonder if the three spaces are really necessary to the overall operation of the restaurant on that basis, um, whether it's necessary to have that there, but it's still gonna be a violation of that curb cut being within a hundred feet of the center line.
Also, pre-existing has been there for decades with the previous restaurant, so...
I, I understand what Brad is saying, it's been there for a long time, but again, you're looking at a, an upgrade to the site plan and...
Which means it has to be...
I think the upgrade would suggest that you need to comply with the regulations when they're there.
Yep.
So, um, I think the only way away from that, and it is a regulation under the parking regulations or, and, uh, access points, that you get a variance from the Board of Appeals on it, to be in compliance.
Yep.
Yep.
How far are you short? Have you measured to see how far off the mark you are?
Regarding.
The hundred-foot from the center line of Route Six to the curb cut?
It would eliminate that whole access point off of Brown Street. Again, I think changing it to one way, it's, right now, there's thirteen parking spaces there. We're changing it to three, so the traffic will be considerably less coming through that. And with it being thirteen-foot wide, one-way, posted, signage on the ground, I think it's going to deter people from going against the traffic that's out there.
Hungry breakfast eaters don't pay a lot of attention to signage.
They don't pay attention to the parking bumpers either. I was there Sunday, and they drove right over them, saying, "Why are these here?" I said, "They're to keep you from parking in the road layout."
Yeah.
I shook my head and turned around.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they need as many parking spaces as possible. It's, obviously, this is, there's not very much definition in regards to parking in this location specifically in the gravel parking area. They kind of, they kind of actually count, they park more than what I was anticipating. So there was pretty much two rows of parking in that gravel area. They had an access point that went right nearest the edge of the woods, and the other access point was right behind the parking that's adjacent to the building. So if you think about it, there were really three rows of parking. I was anticipating two, but, you know, I had to go there and watch it on a Sunday and just see how these people park and what they do. So it's, fortunately, it's, you know, the businesses are hopefully striving, so I think that, it's not that we're oversizing it. Basically, based on what I have, there's really only like six more parking spaces defined. It's about the same if you consider the parking that I saw on Sunday and how they park in that gravel parking lot.
It's just a little more organized this way.
It's just more organized than, you know...
In the thirteen-foot wide lane across the front of the building, that's been approved by the fire department?
Fire, I, they, I provided access across in, off of Marion and out on the Brown Street.
Right.
They haven't seen the revised plan, but they do have access in and around the whole property.
Okay, so you're not looking at the front of the building?
I wasn't looking at the front of the building for...
And they're okay with that?
I haven't submitted a revised plan yet to them.
Okay. So I would think that would be a condition if we approved would be that the fire department would have to sign off on that thirteen-foot wide?
It's the same, I understand that, yeah, it's the same detail that's always been there. So I'm assuming if they had concerns and wanted access across the front, they may have mentioned that initially.
Yep. That was really all that was running through my head. Carl, you got anything?
Two comments. First is just a comment, and for what it's worth, I live there, I use this restaurant all the time. Every single business from Robie Street, the gas station on Robie Street, all the way down to Sam's Gas on Kermit's, has this hundred-foot curb cut problem. There, every one of them has exactly the same issue that Charlie's talking about. That's just a comment. Now, if, as was stated, because this is a site plan upgrade, we're required to consider the parking bylaw and the requirement. My concern would be the same as the last time. We don't have the authority to grant the waiver, and it would be properly sent to the zoning board to grant the waiver.
Could we approve?
This has already been, excuse me, this has already been in front of the building commissioner. He would have said it would need a variance. He did not. He said this is site plan review.
Could have been an oversight on his part?
Probably not. He does a lot of these...
I put a whole lot of faith in that man right there.
I don't think it would be beyond the scope of asking him if he considered that. If he would consider it a requirement for the upgrade, but it would seem logical.
I like your plan redesign, I'm just concerned if we have the authority to approve it.
You're looking at other portions of the bylaw with respect to this upgrade. Parking space dimensions, stormwater, you're looking at buffers.
Right. So why turn a blind eye to the hundred feet?
Well, that's one point.
If everything else has to be abided by?
I think it would be good to, you know, put that to bed one way or the other.
Yep.
And certainly, the place to start would be the building commissioner because he's the only one that can make the reference to the ZBA to get them there if they have to. So asking him the question, you could put that to bed, and he'll either say, "Yeah, you don't have to worry about it," or "Yes, he needs to comply."
But I guess my question is, Ken, can we make that a condition of approval?
I think that'd be the appropriate way to do it because otherwise, it has to go to the Board of Appeals for the site plan review as well as variance.
That way, at least we could keep it moving. I think, looking at it, I agree with Carl, I love the design. I think it has a lot of merit. That would be, I think that's really my only hiccup, is that hundred-foot issue. And I'd hate to see it get stalled and have to come back yet again.
It wouldn't come to this board. If it needed a variance, it goes to the ZBA, and they handle everything.
Yeah, it would. He's right about that. And you would be the ones to make the recommendation, then to the ZBA and to the site plan review, so that part's true enough.
Yep.
Your call, I guess, still, if you want to do it.
Anybody have a comment or opinion? Mike, you always got an opinion. Come on, buddy. Chime in here.
Quiet.
You're killing me. Sam? Would it be inappropriate or out of line to approve it with, or put it to a vote to approve with the condition that the building commissioner sign off on whether or not he needs to go before the ZBA for the curb cut?
Right, you asked the building commissioner whether he has an opinion that it requires the ZBA approval.
So if his opinion is that it doesn't require the ZBA, then you're off and running. We've given you our approval. And if he does think that it needs to go before the ZBA, you would have ended up there anyway if we referred you.
We just wasted the last fourteen weeks then.
Right.
Oh, you've got all the plans done.
Yeah, fourteen weeks ago, so...
Well, I think this is a better plan than you had fourteen weeks.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that would be, that would be my suggestion is to ask for a motion to approve based on the building commissioner's input concerning the curb cut on Brown Street.
So, I move that we approve conditionally. Seven twenty-two site plan review, two forty-six Marion Road, two forty-six Marion Road, LLV, map fifty-five, lot one-ten, parking lot, based on the revised...
Six-ten?
Proposed site plan presented at this meeting dated February 11th, I think, on the top.
And revised six-ten.
And, oh, I'm sorry, and revised to six-ten, with the following understanding, that this is a historical condition. The hundred-foot curb cut requirement is an existing condition, so we're approving it with that understanding. And the condition would be that if the building inspector disagrees with our interpretation of the historical condition, it would have to go to the zoning board.
Yep. Okay, we have...
I tried to summarize everything we said, so it was...
Perfect.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair vote aye, six zero zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next stop, twelve dash twenty-two site plan review, Wareham, Mass., three LLC, ninety-one and one-on-one Ferring Hill Road, map ninety-one and seventy-one, lots one thousand and one thousand seven, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility.
Thank you.
I thought you were giving out food.
Yeah, I know, it looked like donuts.
It looked like a donut box.
And the two-two tie? I told you, I created... I don't know who they were playing tonight. Born, no, not Born. I'm not sure. The decision needs to be signed, for two forty-six Marion Road needs to be signed tomorrow, so everybody's going to have to pop into Town Hall. I just got yelled at by Sonia. Mike, I'm looking at, yo!
What did I sign?
Huh?
I didn't sign anything.
No, no, the decision we just made tonight on two forty-six Marion Road needs to be signed by tomorrow, according to Sonia.
So why are you picking on me?
You're the only one I could see without my glasses. The girls kind of fade into the background.
We're just dust.
She just wanted me to make sure everybody knew, so that we can get in and sign it.
I was trying to take that personally, you know?
Oh, okay. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, from this board, for the record, my name's Joe Shanahan from Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, appearing on behalf of the applicant. You'll be glad to know that this should be very brief because I believe I'm here for only two purposes tonight, both addressing requests by Mr. Schultz at the last meeting. The first request that he made was that we put on the public record and offer up for discussion if necessary, the noise study that was done six months ago in connection with this project. The planning board voted to request that a study be done. I conferred with Mr. Buckland, he was comfortable with the firm of HMMH to do the study. They're actually a world-recognized noise study firm based up in Burlington, Massachusetts, so they undertook the study, submitted the report back on December thirteenth. Basically, by way of brief summary, they were asked to make sure that this project would be in compliance with the Mass DEP noise standards. And those are attached to the study that I submitted to each of you on the last two pages. In order to do that analysis, and I would probably concur with the chairman's comment about the hydrogeology report, I've read the noise study probably four times, and I'm not sure I fully understand all of the data that was generated through the monitoring devices and monitoring period. But generally speaking, what they did is they analyzed the noise that would emanate from this project to the nineteen residential properties closest to the project. Those nineteen properties were on Ferring Hill Road, Helen Street, Island Brook Drive, and Farmers Lane. And the initial findings are in the report along with the anticipated noise generated from the facility and recommendations that come from it. So if the board has any particular questions with regard to this report that's been in your file for the last six months, I'll try to address it. I think your main interest is addressed in the executive summary, which is the very first paragraph of the report on the first page. And it basically says, "By incorporating sound barrier walls along the south and west side of the northern equipment pad, as well as along the east, south, and west sides of the southern equipment pad, the proposed project is expected to operate in compliance with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Mass DEP noise policy." I think that's your concern. We have since, as a result of that report, added those sound barrier walls to our site plan at both the northern and southern equipment pad.
Looks like there's only, so the two houses, that would be affected negatively, those sound barriers?
Yeah, and as you noticed, just barely over the line of being affected. I think one was a ten and one was eleven, and the standard is ten.
Yep. We have, I was a machinist in another life, and we had a saying, "An inch is a mile." But if the barrier would mitigate that, then obviously, it's a non-issue. Okay? And?
I think Mr. Schultz may...
My only question is, have we gotten a copy of the revised site plan? If we did, I missed it.
You have one submitted, but it's now being revised again in accordance with Mr. Price's recommendations in the hydrogeological report.
Okay.
So when that comes in, everything will be folded into that revised.
So there'll be another one, but I didn't remember seeing a revised site plan on the website.
I didn't see it either.
So, Ken, has that revised site plan been posted so that everybody can see it or not?
I assume it has been posted, if it was filed with our office.
Okay, so can we have Monique check?
Hello, Monique Ballen, Assistant Town Planner. Yes, we can make sure that you guys have access to materials while in advance and that anything will be posted to the town calendar.
Specifically, asking for the revised site plan that the applicant submitted.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I looked for it, I missed it.
But I respectfully suggest, Mr. Schultz, as I think Mr. Rowley has reiterated a couple of times, don't spend a lot of time on it currently because there are changes coming.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the second issue, and again raised by Mr. Schultz, was with regard to the solar decommissioning evaluation and cost estimate. We actually did that a year ago, May, but based on Mr. Schultz's comments, which were what I would call good catches, we went back and revised the plan. The one mention he made was that we had incorporated a credit for salvage value of equipment in the cost estimate of removal. He had suggested that that didn't belong in there, we have removed it. The other thing he suggested, which is actually set forth in section five-nine-five-point-three of your current solar bylaw, is that any such plan includes, and I'm quoting, "A mechanism for calculating and adjusting the increased value of the surety, that is, the bond removal cost due to inflation." And we've now suggested a manner by which to do that. Basically, what we've done is we've got a cost estimate to do this removal of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, if in fact, that would include pulling all the posts from the ground. It'd be a little less at one-seventy-nine if we cut it off at ground level. Mr. Schultz expressed some concern if and when this happens, whether it might have any effect on the stabilization of the site. So we're going to use the high estimate of pulling everything out, and if we don't do that, that's fine. That estimate would be the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That would be the amount of our initial bond. What I'm suggesting, and I've done in a number of municipalities, is suggested that the bond amount be reviewed in five-year intervals. It's kind of silly to do it every twelve months. But if we review it every five years, by way of example, since two thousand seventeen to today, the average inflation rate's been three-point-three-six percent. That five-year change is seventeen-point-eight-five percent. So what we would do is, at the end of that five years, whatever that actual inflation comes out to, we would increase the bond to that amount and resubmit it to the town. The one other thing, and Mr. Schultz didn't catch it, nor had we, and it may be new in your bylaw, is we had originally submitted a surety in the amount of the cost estimate. Your current bylaw calls for a surety in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost estimate. So our one-eighty-five would actually translate to two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars in year one, and then increase accordingly.
If I missed it, I apologize, but yes, I...
I'm not suggesting you should have got it, that was on us.
I did know, I did know that, so thanks for catching it.
But that's all I have to say about the decom bond. And the one other thing before we leave it, Mr. Chairman, just to revisit, if I may, Mr. Buckland, is Mr. Price a definite now for June twenty-seventh? Because I, like Mr. Rowley, was thinking that June twenty was the date. That was the last date I had heard.
I believe, if I can check my email, it said the twenty-seventh was okay.
Okay, so I'll plan on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Schultz?
I did have time to review this before the meeting. Everything that Mr. Shanahan said about the calculating the decommissioning cost was fine, and I was pleased to see that. Whether I caught this or not in the previous one, there were two places where I'd like to consider changing the wording, where basically the language in the document, and I'll find it, said, "At the sole discretion of the proponent." There were two places left. One was removing the poles, and the other was the site stabilization. I'll find it, I marked it in my copy. And all I would like to say, as agreed upon with the planning board...
Yeah, that's no problem at all. Happy to revise it once again and put that in there.
Yeah, if you need me to find them, I can send you.
So it would basically be, as proposed by the applicant, reviewed and approved by the planning board?
Right, or agreed to, or however.
Yep, that's fine.
And they were both around the, I think, the...
I know exactly where you're talking about.
That was the only thing that I... It was in the previous language, I apologize for that.
Nope, no problem at all.
But other than that, I think this met what I asked for. And the other thing that you added, which you didn't call out, but you added a decommissioning cost for fencing, which was not in the previous...
That's correct.
Previous proposal. So he addressed all the questions I raised.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments?
I have one quick question. Trying to put together what the record is in this proceeding. We've talked about this before, but I have one other question, which is, there is a submission in, on the webpage that is just labeled Ferring Hill and references several projects, including this one. I'm assuming that this is part of the record in this proceeding, that that document is part of the record in this proceeding that we are looking at for purposes of the review of this application.
I would have to assume the same thing.
Excuse me, I don't think I agree. There's one folder that's out there on the main page. I don't think that's relevant, and we can get a clarification. I think the documents in Project 3621, which were supposed to be brought forward, and I don't believe have been brought forward yet, and the documents in 12-dash, or 22-12 are the only documents that we're considering.
Yeah, Ms. Quirk, I just suggest, I think if I heard you correctly, you indicated that particular item referenced other solar projects also?
In addition to this one, yes.
If that was the case, then that came from an outside source to the board
Right.
Because we would never reference another solar project in any of our submissions.
In fact, it is from a third-party commenter. So, you know, my question is, since it references this project, shouldn't it be brought into this proceeding as well?
Are we talking about the documents that Ms. Hayes submitted in folder 12 or...
No, this is submitted by, let me see, Community Land and Water Coalition?
Oh, that, that should be part of this rec... They submitted that as part of 3621, I think. Those should be all brought forward. They haven't been brought forward yet.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, only the files in those two folders are what I'm looking at. 3621, I think that's the project reference from last, the previous one, and 12-22, or 22-12, or whichever way we number them, 12-22.
Well, I'll take a look at this to make sure of it, but just for completeness of the record.
If you want, we could just go over that sometime and just make sure. I think we need to... I said last time, we need to enumerate all the relevant documents that we should be considering.
Yes.
And it's, they haven't all been brought forward to this new project folder.
Yeah, and I know a number of the minutes have been put so that they're available to us and, you know, have been approved. Be helpful to have a reference to all the minutes or the meetings where this issue was discussed, so that we can be sure to read all of those.
Is there a timeline for getting all those documents up into this project?
I would say by the end of the week, and I'm also documenting minutes for this meeting, so you guys will have that before your next meeting, and then, you know, as part of your packet you'll receive, we can include any of the minutes that, you know...
From the previous meetings.
Exactly, and that'll be like highlighted, color-coordinated, and organized.
You're women, yes, you're women.
I appreciate your commitment. Do you know what you've just...
What you've just committed to?
We've been doing this for a long time now.
But we love the idea of being in compliance with the law, so go for it.
Okay. Is there...
I'm not looking for any action this evening, Mr. Chairman. It was just informational.
Yeah, we're looking forward to listening to the hydrologist to see what it is he's gonna bring forth. All right, so if there's nothing else from the board, I'll open it up to the public. Is there any comment from the public on this? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, again, with all due respect, it's my understanding that we're only dealing with the noise study and the decommissioning one tonight, correct?
Well, that wasn't the specific reason, but I'm going to keep a very tight rein on what's going on.
The only reason I say that is I didn't bring our civil engineering team with us.
Yep, no, understood.
Before we let Mr. Shanahan go, and before we let Mr. Lintala, he piqued a thought. One item from November, I don't think we ever discussed in public meeting, was Ancient Ways, which I'm sure Mr. Lintala's about to speak to, but you, he had spoken last year about it exhaustively.
I thought I had submitted documentary evidence.
You did, but I don't know that we ever reviewed it in public hearing. So that, I did have that as a note, as an open item.
We'll get it next time, thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Lintala's gonna give us more to think about.
My name's Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road, West Wareham. I'll mention the number, the package you've got, I'll mention the number, what you could be looking at when I speak. I wish to quickly mention three important past facts that are important to the new investigations pertaining to cultural, historical, and archaeological evidence on Ferring Hill. This is in reference to the November 7th, 2021 Save the Pines Barrens document that they submitted, which is very important. It was information that they state, "There's credible evidence, reasonable, there's credible, reasonable evidence before the board to warrant a historic archaeological survey under Article 12 Performance Standards." I submitted to the board on November 22nd, a document, the historic, from the Historic Archaeological Resources of Southeastern Massachusetts, that contained information and a map showing contact-period native trails. And lastly, I submitted a document from Massachusetts Heritage Landscape Inventory that specifically mentioned an ancient Indian route through the Weewantic watershed. Following our new investigations, item number two in your packet, "Further proof for ancient ways can be read in an article in Wareham Week dated June 10, 2010, titled 'Tracing Our Footsteps' by Cyrus Moulton." It states with a map clearly showing Ferring Hill Road marked in red, the caption reads, quote, "A map from 1795 shows the original Wampanoag Trail traced in red." Item number three, "Further investigation discovered several U.S. Geological Survey maps dating 1938, 1942, 1949, 1962, 1977, all showing the same trails on Ferring Hill, all potential ancient ways." And interestingly, all these maps show the cart path, which is designated in their legends as an unimproved road. Item number four, in their site application, "Under existing conditions, there is no mention at all about any evidence or possible evidence pertaining to cultural, historical, or archaeological material. What is mentioned, and I quote, 'Existing walking trails are located throughout the site primarily in north-south direction,' end of quote, and that's it. Only one trail, or as it's been referred to as a cart path, shows up on their site plan map.'" Item number four there. "Every mark and every line on that map is described in the legend, except this major trail or cart path, which shows as a double-dash line and has no mention at all." Item number five, "The images I have provided clearly show the cart path. It has obviously been there a long time. It is deeply rutted and no more than six feet wide. It travels in the northwest direction as it reaches the high point midway up the hill, and then veers north where it becomes an ancient trail that still exists, moving west until it ends at the railroad tracks. And interestingly, directly across from this trail where it ends is Mr. David Moretti's property." An email to Ms. Annie Hayes dated January 10, 2022, from Mr. David Moretti, who lives on Helen Street, which abuts the property, proposed solar property in the northwest corner, quote, "December 1989, while having the house built on Helen Street, West Wareham, he had an unexpected visit from a lawyer from Plymouth Bank. Sole reason was the placement of the structure on the lot. They would not fund his, my mortgage if the structure was on an ancient way that ran through the property. June 1990, while having on the property a free town selectman, he agreed with the bank's assessment of the property as a right-of-way for anyone born before the Civil War to pass through the area. It also is a right-of-way for indigenous peoples in the area." Item number six, "When it comes to finding any ceremonial stone landscapes, there is one location that stands out as a purposeful boulder place configuration. The items, the images I have provided show a series of granite bowlers located in a brushy area along one of the, one of those potential ancient trails. They're approximately 22 to 24 inches in diameter, each about six to eight feet apart and positioned in a straight line. The Wareham Historical Committee, who supports the protection and saving Ferring Hill from its solar development, was asked to identify a resource to protect. The question being, is there a trail through this property or some other historic archaeological resource? I believe there has been more than enough evidence provided by individuals and organizations to warrant more investigation and to question whether this solar project is endangering Wareham's cultural, historical, and archaeological resources." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, briefly, please, yeah.
Wait, before we let Mr. Lintala go, I have a question.
Okay.
No, no, you could respond, and then I'll ask my question. Mr. Lintala, can you, okay, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I believe I've alluded to this previously, but all of this information, I'll call it information that's just been shared with the board, ignores one underlying fact. There is not one document, not one document to substantiate that any of the items that have been brought forth this evening are protected. Contact trails are not a protected cultural resource. Ancient ways are not a protected cultural resource. They exist, I won't ask Mr. Rowley to confirm it, but ancient ways exist all over the place. Many of them are used for public access to develop subdivisions sometimes. They aren't protected. We do an analysis with the Mass Historical Commission. It's a database, it's called MACRIS, M-A-C-R-I-S, and if you plug in an address to MACRIS, it will tell you whether there are any protected items at that particular site. Our MACRIS record is completely clear. So I'd respectfully suggest that an article, with all due respect to the Wareham Week, whatever that may be, is not documentation of a protected cultural resource, and I will further address... And by the way, Mr. Chairman, that report you're looking at, there's a report like that for every regional, county, region in the state of Massachusetts. There are more native contact trails across Massachusetts than anyone can count. They are not a protected resource, and we can address this further in another session.
That was my request, that you produced a... We never discussed it in open forum, so...
Happy to do that.
Okay, so for the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to add to the list, but this would be a good thing to discuss with Town Council as well, whether we have, whether an obligation exists and what it may imply for us.
Okay, there are several places in the bylaws that say we can and should consider historical, it's very open wording, but we can, there are places where it says that.
Thank you, I'll take a look at that as well.
Mr. Chairman, if you could ask Mr. Lintala to come back.
Mr. Lintala?
May I ask, Mr. Chairman, may I get a copy of that submission?
I think, I don't see why not, I mean, it's part of the public record now.
This needs to get posted.
Yeah.
Okay. Two, one request and then one comment. You made a very passionate and exhaustive enumeration of artifacts. If you could provide that list of artifacts you referenced in your comment, and copies of those artifacts, if we don't have them, it would be helpful.
Artifacts being, besides the ones I've submitted to you here?
You listed a whole bunch of other things that are...
The images I've sent, yeah.
Yeah, but you said there was an email to Ms. Hayes.
Yes, I can provide the email.
That was an example, but there were, you listed quite a few.
And there'll be a comment coming, there were two, Melissa and, I forget the other, I forget her names, but two people from a Wampanoag tribe have been up on that hill to examine the items that I've even submitted here, and were very impressed. They'll be submitting information as well.
I'm asking that they be made part of the public record.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
And then I would like to comment on one reference that Mr. Lintala made. At the beginning of your statement, you referred to a letter from Save the Pine Barrens, it may not have been that group, but referring to Article 12.
Yes.
I want to specifically point you to Article 12, 16.9, which says Article 12 does not apply to site plan review.
Okay.
But you can read 12, 16.9 in the bylaw, and it's exempted, site plans are exempted. Land use for site plans are exempted from Article 12.
A quick question, Mr. Shanahan stated where their information has come from a Massachusetts site. The Massachusetts.gov has many, many of these major sites, and they have many subsites under each of these categories. And that is where I've been finding information. He's correct in what he states. And then when you go to other areas under that, especially the archaeological, historical, you'll find a lot more information, a lot of it that I presented, you know, that shows the maps, the trails, mentions the ancient way that should, that is threatened by development. And this is from the government, same site. And there are, and I found that a lot of the references, and I can only say it because I'm not speaking about the endangered species, but the site he speaks of, and that's on the government site, there's a subcategory that shows, and he's correct when he says there's no major priority habitat of endangered species. But then when you go to the Fish and Wildlife section under that same as a subcategory, it has the maps, it has the photographs of the critters, and everybody who lives there knows as well. So when he's, when you're, when we're talking about, from the information we're getting from the, you know, official sites, there's a lot of other subsites that have a whole different story to it.
Again, I would request that you submit those documents so that the applicant and the board, we have to weigh.
Absolutely. I will forward all of that.
Great, it'd be helpful.
Please do.
Send them to Monique or Ken.
Yeah, I was gonna say, send them to Monique.
Any other questions or...
No, no, I just wanted to request that we get all of that, so we have it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Hi, Annie. Okay. You do know I'm gonna set a timer, right? I love you dearly, but I'm gonna set a timer.
You had new information, you could just ramble on, so.
No.
First, I want to say that Mr. Buckland said that Section 12 should be considered nonetheless in site plan review, I mean, in special permits, did you not? Man, I should've had you right down.
Well, he can't, he can't overrule the bylaw, so the bylaw specifically says special permit doesn't apply.
I understand that, and I've looked it up, but he did say that because I asked him. I want to give you a little bit of information about the PFASs because I think they're extremely important, but I would also like to... Oh, okay, yeah. Mr. Cosgrove, last meeting, talked about the groundwater protection overlay... Mr. Cosgrove, last meeting, talked about the groundwater protection overlay district, and I want to read a couple of findings for, the section is 445, findings for granting of special permits. And, number one, proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this zoning bylaw and will promote the purposes of the groundwater protection overlay district. Proposed use is appropriate to the natural topographies, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed. Three, proposed use will not during construction or thereafter have an adverse environmental impact on the aquifer or recharge area. And four, proposed use will not adversely affect any, oh, an existing or potential public or private water supply. That takes me to the wells. There are lots of wells around Ferring Hill, and it's really on Ferring Hill, because the hill is not just what we see from Ferring Hill Road and we're talking about. That is the ridge of the hill. The majority of the ridge of the hill is covered by this project, and from the ridge of the hill, water flows down in all directions. And so it is very much a watershed, and the, I'm learning about headwaters, little rivulets, and that will come with the video next time. But this is, the high-risk areas in red for the sole source aquifer. Wareham is significantly the most red of any community by a long shot. So we are not doing such a great job in protecting our water, and it is absolutely critical. So now comes along PFASs, and I want to read just as much as Mr. King will allow. PFAS and related compounds. According to the National Institute of Environmental Health Scientists, perfluoroalkyl and pluroalkyl substances, PFASs, are toxic, persistent, and bioaccumulative. These synthetic fluorochemicals were developed in the 1930s at first, and have strong carbon-fluorine bonds that make the structure repel both oil and water. That's insignificant in panel use. The Green Science Policy Institute details that these man-made chemicals are widely used in building materials, paints, cleaning products, non-stick coatings, sealants, tapes, wiring covers, glass, solar panels, and batteries. And it's those reasons that solar manufacturers use them. Non-stick coatings to repel water, and with the repulsion of the water goes the dust and pollen and everything else, whoops, that blocks the amount of electricity that can be generated. And PFAS is commonly found in foam used to extinguish electrical fires, which we also know because of battery storage issues.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
And I'll add my time to your time when the alarm goes off.
Oh, I think that's fair.
Now, you say that the solar panels are made with PFAS. Is there anything that indicates that they expend any battery?
That they what?
That they lose, that they, you know, it's built with it.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
So that would be, that would be information that the board would want to see.
That's all in this one. The durability of these coatings against UV light and abrasion resistance would need to be improved if they are to be applied to PV cover glass, but they are applied to PV. The coatings may resist the harsh environmental stresses such as damp heat and humidity freeze, but they're susceptible to damage under UV exposure for, so a number of reasons that they degrade. And after 35 years, it is a logical assumption that they have gone into the groundwater long before them. So let me just see where I am now. Despite industry and a few academic assurances to the contrary, broad research consistently indicates that PFAS chemicals are used in solar panel and battery manufacturing and installation. PFAS is found in the coatings on electrical wires, backing, panels, tapes, and adhesives. And then it goes on to the particular ones that are of greatest concern. And I want to just read what they, there's a lot of on federal legislation. So surprisingly, the coatings began to degrade quickly, and the effect was clear after only two weeks of exposure. Degradation resulted in decreasing water contact angle and increasing roll-off angles. The location or accumulated amounts of the degraded chemicals is not discussed in these studies. It is logical to assume that the chemicals sloughing off with the rainwater are deposited into the underlying soil, groundwater, and aquifers. The cumulaty effect of thousands of solar panels, 7,333 on Ferring Hill alone, for 35 or more years would most likely permanently contaminate the site's groundwater, soil, and stormwater runoff. Guess I'm done.
I gave you another 30 seconds to compensate for my blabbering.
Take another look at this.
I see it.
Sole source aquifer, high-risk contamination.
Okay, thank you, Annie.
Same question as last time, Annie. Please submit all of your reference material so we can read it and look at it. And then one question through you to Mr. Buckland. We've had several citizen statements that Ferring Hill is in the groundwater protection overlay district. I'm looking at the zoning map. I don't see that it's in the, Zone 2 groundwater protection is in the northeast part of town, but I don't see it on the zoning map for Ferring Hill.
It does not cover that part of the town.
Correct, so we've had, we've had several statements from citizens, so am I correct in understanding that the Zone 2 groundwater protection overlay district does not apply to Ferring Hill?
Well, then, let...
Wait, let me ask...
Ma'am, like Ken's...
I'll confirm that.
I'm just looking at the zoning map, so...
Yeah, the zoning map doesn't show it that way. It doesn't show an overlay district in that area.
Yes, that's correct. That's how I'm interpreting it.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, 30 seconds now.
Yeah.
So we have 211, Mr. Price was told that there was zero private wells.
I'm not talking about private wells. You said groundwater protection.
No, no, I understand that, and I did have a question about the, it says groundwater protection district is established as an overlay district whose boundaries are superimposed on all districts, and then it says established by this bylaw.
Which bylaw is that?
By the zoning bylaw, and it establishes it by showing it on the zoning map, and it shows it on the zoning map in the eastern part of the town, not in Ferring Hill.
So it's the map that establishes it.
That's how I was interpreting it.
That's fine.
No, I just, I wanted us all to be clear, so we're all talking about the same thing.
We have the facts. Doesn't mean that we care any less about it, just because it doesn't drop into that area.
I'm so glad, mere technicality, right. But when you have private wells, how does that groundwater get protected?
And that's what the hydro...
That's what the hydrologist is gonna hopefully shed some light on, is what's gonna go on there.
More paper. Thank you.
Supposed to be protecting the environment.
I understand that, I'm trying, and I'm trying, and I'm trying to help you.
Mr. Chairman, we need to enumerate all these documents, so we need to get these dated.
Well, I'll give my copy to, oh, no, Ken's got it, okay.
Yeah.
I think...
Okay.
Okay.
Nancy McHale, Ferring Hill, Precinct 5. I am one of the stewards of the Wareham Land Trust stewards for the town-owned Ferring Hill Conservation Property. What I just gave you are a few selected photographs out of the thousands and thousands that we've taken over the years. I have issues with the fact that the hydrologist report does nothing, says nothing about the eastern side of the hill. It only, it says, it's wasteland. It means nothing. It says nothing about the eight properties, the eight homes that are on that eastern side either. All, all of those homes, but the conservation land, and there's, you know, if that conservation land ceases to be upland or is seriously degraded, so will those homes be. Again, we're all on wells, we're on septics, so those are issues. Also, the noise study has, makes no mention of the eastern side, other than Island Brook, which is, what, half a mile away, a mile away, something like that? It says nothing about the effect of those noises on the, on the critters that live there. There have been studies done, a survey done of the, the natural history of the area. There's also been plant studies done by the Botanical Club of Cape Cod, and I can make those available to you as well. I know the Conservation Commission already has those. But I just need you to understand what the property looks like from the, from standing on the Ferring Hill Conservation Area, looking up at that potential solar field. And any degradation that's gonna come from excessive runoff, from improperly maintained storm drains or whatever, the erosion coming down that hill is gonna be massive, and it's going to degrade the area. There are numerous uplands within that property, within the Ferring Hill Conservation Area. There are trails, people use those trails. What's the noise level gonna be when you're on those trails? And what's the noise level gonna be when you're near the boundary line? And you can see on the last page, there's the old map, the old survey from, I think it's, that one in particular is dated 71, of the amount of stone walls that are on that area. But eventually, there would be trails up into that section, and people are gonna be hearing whatever is going on, on that, with the noise level. So the fact that it's really been ignored is extremely disturbing. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, thank you.
Kathy Papillardo, Ferring Hill Road. In regards to Sherry's comments, I would also like to say there's a folder on the Planning Board website that's titled Citizens Comments.
I've seen that.
The bulk of those are letters from abutters to the Ferring Hill Project. They need to get moved over. And I know Kevin Barsh sent a very detailed letter last week, and I haven't seen it appear yet. Do you know, we sent via email to the Planning Board. Do you know if you received it?
Yeah, we did receive it.
Sorry?
We did receive it, yes.
Okay, because it's not posted on the website yet.
Sorry about that, if it isn't posted.
Okay, well, we just want to make sure we're all looking at the same information, so we don't want to come back and rehash what we've already been through, but we want to make sure everything is moved over, so everybody's looking at the same information and can move forward with this.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm your new liaison, I'm being quiet, enjoy it. It's killing me, that one.
Okay, so, thank you for the input. We appreciate it. We understand, and we do hear your concern. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the already determined date of June 27.
I move that we continue 1222 Site Plan Review, Wareham, MA3 LLC, 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road, MAP 97 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility until June 27.
Second, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Sherry Quirk?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Carl Schultz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, 600, continue till the 27. Thank you very much. We're running out of time, according to Bob. Other business?
Yes, I have follow-up on other business. Are we ready?
Ready.
At the last meeting, we voted to request, require that management from Wareham Retail meet with the Planning Board about our concerns about the conditions of the site, that we were supposed to do that at the time. One of the concerns, I think, that Mr. King raised was the lawn mowing, which was addressed, but subsequent...
Next morning, they must have been watching the meeting.
But subsequent to that, we, there's flooding issues, retention basin erosion issues, and several other open issues that have not been addressed. So I'd like to know a status of that request.
I believe I saw a letter from you to the management company.
That's right, the letter went out to the management company on the dumpsters and the, the conditions around the pads out in front.
Did we get copies of that letter? I don't know that I saw that letter.
The drainage was just something that Charlie had pointed out to us recently.
Right, I saw that.
I don't know if that's with Walmart system or with the retail management system.
It's Walmart system, because it's in that portion of the road that they still own.
Right.
However, I, just personal opinion, I don't think that it's a Walmart issue, because I think that the catch basins in that area were right in front of the construction site for Wareham Retail. And I think what their contractor did was put filter fabric under the basin grates to plug them up so that sediment wouldn't go down into the systems, and nobody's ever removed it. I think that's what the issue is. So it's a very simple thing, if they will get on the ball and get in there and clean it up. But there are some other things, too. The drainage area over in that northwest corner has developed a significant erosion issue now. I went by there again today, because it was flooded again after the rain that we had last night. And there's portions of the irrigation line that are now exposed because they're all eroded, so they need to pay attention to that.
And the letter we identified the erosion problem as being one of the issues they had to address as well, too. But if it gotten worse, then it's something more they have to deal with, and...
Right, there were a number of issues in my letter dating back in December, but I don't recall that I mentioned the erosion at that time. At that time, there was an issue with the seeding of the area, they hadn't really finished that, and some of the landscaping. It appears that the landscaping has taken hold and is flourishing, so that may be a non-issue, but there are some other things there that they still need to address. I put that into the email recently, and the pictures that I took that I forwarded to you.
Do we have, is there a timeline for them to respond, or is it, we sit and wait?
No, we gave them a timeframe of 30 days, I believe.
But our motion, well, first of all, I didn't see a copy of that letter, I apologize if I missed it. And our motion was to have them come before the Planning Board.
Exactly.
Well, that, I would think that that letter would, did that letter indicate that?
That the Planning Board wanted action and wanted an audience.
An audience, right.
It said that?
Yes.
Oh, good, I just didn't see the letter, so I apologize.
I have another enforcement issue as well, too, with the master mill works.
You're kidding.
They're looking to get a, an extension on their temporary CO. They were given a deadline of completing the work as of next week, I believe, but they haven't, they won't be able to do it until, it'll take them at least a week and probably... a, a week and probably a, a couple of weeks to finish up the work there.
So who, who has to rule on that? Us?
Saw that one coming a mile away.
You, you have to, you have to okay the temporary CO extension for.
I vote no.
And, and what happens if we, if we, I mean, we were pretty adamant about giving them 60 days, and that was that.
Right.
So if we, if we vote no not to extend, where's the enforcement at that point?
It comes from the, um, the, uh, the Building Commissioner, uh, since he can, can control the CO.
And, and he.
He can hold it back from them.
And, and so what does that mean? He, look, padlocks the front door, and they, they don't work until they correct the problem?
That's right, they can't use the building until they've corrected the problem.
I'm, I'm not in favor of extending it. I think we've been.
More than fair.
There's someone from Master Mill Works.
And is on the, the line probably, the, the, the principal from, uh, Master Mill Works who wants to address the board.
Uh, by all means, let them, let them in.
Are we done with Wareham Retail?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We, we still need to have them come before the board, so I'll fall through.
But that's, but that's in the works, right?
Can you send a copy of that letter to the board?
Yeah, we'll do.
Yeah, okay. And after we're done with Master Mill Works.
I'm satisfied that we're, we're acting on that.
Well, you're lying with the microphone. Very tough to hear you.
Thank you, I'm satisfied if I get a copy of the letter and with Ken's explanation that we're moving forward with Wareham Retail.
With enforcement, yeah.
With enforcement. So moving on then to Master Mill Work, which we're discussing now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, if you could let him in.
Hi, this is Hannon with Master Mill Work.
Uh, can, can we dial up the, the volume a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing him.
Can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Um, the issue that we're having is the HVAC units that were ordered for the building. We ordered in December, and they are scheduled to deliver Friday, which means that I won't be able to get my final, um, my final affidavits from the engineers for the control build to submit to the Building Department for, um, CO. As far as the site improvements, the parking lot is complete. We're finalizing the, um, the landscaping, and the irrigation people will be out this week. So the site will be complete substantially for the, for the, um, for the CO, but the problem that I'm having is the HVAC units.
So you, you indicated that they're gonna be delivered Friday. How long from delivery to installation?
Um, they're telling me they're gonna do everything to get them in. Uh, the problem that I'm having is that I don't have full confidence in the Friday I've, I've been pushed out weeks and weeks and weeks. I mean, I've been pushed out months.
And does this, does this company know your predicament? Or, or do they care, or they don't care?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I was, I was, um, present for the, I mean, I was on Zoom for the last, um, Planning Board meeting where, where we were discussed, and I understand fully the, the implications of not having this. I understand that you guys, um, that you had said that there wasn't gonna be an extension issued, and I, I can promise you that I have done everything in my power to get this done. I, I, it's a, it's a construction-wide issue, and I, I wish there was something I could do to, to change that.
Charlie, have you been out to the site?
No.
So you don't know if.
I don't know what the conditions are right now, no.
And, and when does the, the temporary CO come to a conclusion?
I'm not sure.
I believe it, I believe it expires over the weekend.
Over the weekend.
Kyle?
Yes.
Okay, my comments, uh, as you know, this, this project has, from an enforcement concern, has been a concern of mine forever. If not extending the CO means that they need to shut down operations, my concern would be the impact on the people who work there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and their livelihood, that would be a concern. The explanation of the supply chain issue for the air conditioning units.
Is, is.
Makes sense, is, and it is consistent. I think that we could, as much as I know that we said we weren't gonna do it, I, I could accept if we, can we do this periodically, Ken? Like 30?
You can extend the temporary CO.
Yeah.
Actually, you're not gonna ask the Building Commissioner to extend the temporary CO.
So 30 days at a time, or?
Well, would you be?
I'm asking for two weeks.
Two weeks. So.
For the next meeting, we have to do.
Safe bet is to say 30 days.
30 days. I was just gonna say the same thing. Two, two weeks sounds too optimistic based on what you're talking about. If we give you 30 days, and this is strictly up to the board, I can't obviously promise anything, um, you, you, you need to realize that this, this is like the law, the line in the sand. We don't want to cause financial hardship to any business in town and certainly not affect your employees, um, but, you know, we made a conscious decision that the projects in town and the contractors and developers that are, that are responsible for them are gonna start toting the line when it comes to the conditions of approval, and, and your project in particular was a painful one. So 30, if, if we vote for 30 days, you, you, please impress upon your contractor, your suppliers, your next-door neighbor that this, this is it. This is where it ends.
I, I understand completely, and I, I can't thank all of you enough. I, I appreciate the forbearance throughout the whole project.
We haven't voted yet, so. Don't, don't thank us quite yet. We, we still have to vote on this.
So I, I move.
Well, I'm thank, I'm thanking you for the forbearance throughout the entire project. I, it's, it's very much appreciated.
I move that we, uh, request the, the zoning enforcement officer slash Building Commissioner to extend the temporary CO, I don't remember the project number, for Master Mill Works, uh, by 30 days. And how, do we have to send them a letter, or?
With the understanding that there are no more extensions. They're either in compliance or they're not.
I, I, I understand that, but it, it's hard, yes. Okay, with that understanding. I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason. Uh, so, uh, vote to extend. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
No.
Kyle?
I don't wanna be in a position. Line, line in the sand.
I know, I know.
Line in the sand. Been saying it for six months.
I don't wanna be in a position of not supporting you. I. I'm, I'm gonna say okay. Aye.
Aye, okay. The, the.
And I appreciate.
The, the chair votes aye. Uh, so it'd be five, 5-1-0.
I know.
Um, so, uh, motion's been voted on and approved. You've got a 30-day extension. Just please do everything in your power to complete your work before the 30 days runs out on you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna take a drive-by.
Um.
Visual.
Yeah.
I don't even know what it's extended for. I just. Oh, no, I just meant. What are the items to be done? I have no clue. The air conditioning. No, 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 I mean, I'm talking about the site.
Well, his, his assertion is everything is done.
Okay.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll know with your visit whether that's.
It doesn't matter, we'll, we'll still do a final. If you ask me to make a site visit and make an assessment of the site, I would be happy to do it.
Yes, I would, I would appreciate that. Do I need to ask Ken to authorize it, or are we good?
I just gotta make sure there's enough in the 53G to do.
53G, okay. Yeah, because we want to make sure when the 30 days comes due, we know. Hundred percent.
We're, we're, I don't know if you heard the discussion, we're requesting that Charlie do a site inspection and give us a status.
Oh, Master Mill Works?
Yeah, please.
Is that okay?
Good idea.
Yeah.
We know what, what the story is that's going on there.
All right.
And then, then I'll feel, if it's only the delivery of the air conditioning units, I feel better about our extension.
Right.
But if there's a ton of other, I feel like there's gonna be more. Well, and then, then I'll be comfortable with wanting the same.
Right. And, and, and now that we've had the, the proponent on the line, and he's been given fair warning, I, I won't feel bad about not extending it.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Again, the supply chain issue.
Yeah.